The Board of Selectmen for Monday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-one to order. And we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sure we're not hearing anybody.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, public speak. We're going to go around my board. So Kathy and Mike Plaza, you're first.
We're all set. Thank you. I turned it right over to Eric.
Okay, you got it. Diane Grenier.
No, I'm all set too. Thank you.
Jerry Kremay.
I'm here.
You all set? You ready, uh, you public speaker now?
Sure.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, no problem. I do not have a name for the individual here. Uh, that's Jay. Hi, Jay. How are you? Do you, would you like to say anything, Jay?
Just hello.
Hi.
I'm on.
Good to see you.
How's everybody doing? How you doing, Jay?
Anything to say, Jay?
Yes, will we start the meeting?
Uh, it's public speak.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. You were probably given out a paper that came through by Eric Anderson. I sent it over to Jeff McQuire on the update of the monument park that we'd like to, uh, to get the irrigation system in, the low mean, the poles, the, uh, new well to sustain the irrigation. As you know, I'm very passionate about the Monument Park. And you know, there's over two hundred and fifty thousand cars a week that go by there plus. And it's a gateway to Endover. And I believe that it should look really nice. And with your help, and I'd be more than glad to put time and and could even raise probably some money to help with this. I don't, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, thank you, Jerry. We'll get to that. It's on the agenda. So Joan Foran, you are next in line. Would you like to comment during public speak?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Diane Chocat.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Sloan, would you like to come in public speak? Okay. Catherine McGoldy Lewis, last one on my board.
No, thank you.
Okay, let's get started. Um, any additions and deletions to the meeting?
Jeff, I have a few. Uh, I'd like to add item six B resignation of Susan Magri. Item nine I, which is, uh, man, I can't even read my own handwriting. Uh, oh, selection of town budget meeting dates. And item four A, one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary commission report. And Adrian has texted me multiple times saying he can't get on. He's going to try to get on in about five minutes. He's got a computer issue. Jeff, you're muted.
All right. I was trying to type during that, Eric, so I could remember all these. So six B was a resignation of Susan. How do you say her last name?
Uh, M A G R I.
Just so I, just so everybody knows it, resignation from where?
Uh, from the building department as the building admin.
Okay. And then what was your next one?
The next one would be nine I, which is, uh, town budget meeting date.
Last one?
And the last one is for a one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee report.
Okay. Paula, do you have anything you want to add?
No, all set.
Jeff Murray? No, Scott, if you have anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we add, uh, for a one hundred and fifty, one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary report. Six B resignation of Susan Megry from the building department and nine I town budget meeting date discussion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, all right. Um, we're going to go on to item four, boards and commission presentations. Do we have any boards and commissions that are presenting tonight, Eric?
Uh, for a one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary, I believe Kathy wants to speak to that.
Kathy, the floor is yours.
No, um, I believe that Catherine will speak for us for one seventy-fifth. We are trying to, um, add a member. And I believe the Board of Selectmen has to approve that, and that is, um, Marinella Villa Chafon, Chafon would like to be on our committee. Catherine, would you like to speak about that?
Sure. Sorry, I didn't know I was going to. Yes, we had Marinella. She was at our last meeting last week. And she was great. And when we first started out, we did have more than seven. I believe we had nine. And, um, someone moved and someone else had to resign. So we just thought, forget it, we'll just stick with the seven and we'll be fine. But she was very helpful and had a lot of good ideas and we would just like to, um, have her as part of our committee.
Okay, could you spell her name for Amanda?
Yes, I apologize, Amanda. I will, um, that up for you. Hold on.
I got it. Thank you.
Oh, you do?
Spell it too.
Okay, good.
You're all set, Amanda? Or do you need an Amanda? You good?
Okay, so somebody want to make that motion to, um, add that member to that board?
I make a motion to add Marinella Chafont to the one hundred and seventy-fifth, uh, committee as a member.
I'll second that.
Okay, for the discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Tell Marlena, I believe that that is how our name is spelled. Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you so much, you guys. She's, it'll be big help. Thank you.
Uh, anything else, any other committees? Eric, we're all set with the committees and boards?
That's correct.
Okay, five, we're going to appointments. Sherry Holmes is the finance director. Has Sherry started?
Uh, not yet. She starts officially on the fifteenth.
Okay, and, uh, as a side question, um, when did the, uh, position for the assistant to the finance department?
Correct.
Was there a contract signed with her or anything other than she joined the union in that position?
Uh, there wasn't a contract because it's a union position.
No, no, no. I just wanted to know if there was a contract or something we wrote out about that individual participating between the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen.
Uh, the only thing we have for that position, we had an offer letter and we have had a memorandum of understanding with the union covering her job responsibilities.
So in essence, we don't have anything between the Board of Education in that position?
Probably not. What, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking.
No, no, no. I, I, I read, I read what you sent us. And so my question was, is there anything reciprocating on the opposite side between the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen?
No, I mean, what really needs to happen is there needs to be, um, a shared service agreement between the two entities.
Okay.
Of some sort.
All right. Does anyone have any, uh, any questions related to that contractor or any concerns related to what is currently out there? Have we all read it? Right. I mean, the biggest issue in that document is, in my mind, it has nothing to do with anything other than termination of that position. I don't believe there's any. We have, we have nothing, we have no say in termination of that position. Erica, Eric and the, the town have, um, evaluation privileges and that's pretty much it. So we have to determine, you know, the way that contract is written or that agreement is written, the Board of Education is responsible for the compensation. Um, we are supposed to pay one dollar to the Board of Education and, um, we have to decide if we want, what, if we want to make adjustments to that contract or do we sign it right now? Because I don't mind her working for us. Eric said in his email that, you know, we need this in place for the individual to start working for us. I don't necessarily know that's accurate. But other members of the board have to decide what we're going to do related to that.
I don't, I don't know. Is there really much we can do at this point? I mean, they've already moved forward on that contract unilaterally, so I don't know that we can modify the contract at this point, certainly. So it's really a memorandum of understanding issue as far as oversight. If if we were to make an adjustment in oversight, would it conflict with the contract? I don't, I mean, I read the contract, but I didn't really close enough to see if there would be some sort of conflict there.
Well, personally, I think the only thing that would happen is, you know, it would be an interesting thing. They terminate, let's sit there and say they, the Board of Education terminated that position. We'd have nothing to say about it.
We couldn't. I think right now the issue would be we couldn't.
Terminated either.
Well, we could, we could terminate services on our side. They could terminate services on their side. It's the overlap that's the issue.
Dennis is raising his hand. Hey, Dennis, go ahead.
You're muted, Dennis. You're still muted.
Dennis, can Amanda unmute?
Okay.
There it is. It's a mouse. Thank you.
I mean, my mouse was moving, but nothing was coming out. All right, that's, that's rare. Anyway.
Unusual for a lawyer.
Unusual for me especially. And, uh, you know, we, we had a big problem in Wyndham with that, huge problem. We had a charter provision that covered it. And, uh, it didn't work out. There were, there were issues that came up and, um, we had to change it. We changed the charter and, uh, caused a huge furor in town. If you read the Chronicle, you probably, you probably saw allusions to it. So, you know, I think you need to be careful with this. I'd be glad to look at the document you have and offer some suggestions if the horse isn't already out of the barn.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Dennis, you already regroup, reviewed the shared services agreement. You did that when they first gave it to us, which was the original holdup with me giving it to the board, was I asked you to review it prior to the board getting it. So that was a.
Dennis, I sent you the contract. I just forwarded it to you.
The Board of Ed?
Yep, so you can look at it. It's a very simple contract. Major problem with anything other than the fact that there's no procedure for termination.
That was the problem here. We didn't, you know, there was a, a question that came up about termination of, uh, of the Director of Finance here and, uh, you know, who had the power and whatnot. And they, they shared the power and they couldn't agree on it. And, uh, it was pretty horrible. So I don't know. And I don't recall seeing that, but, you know, if you have a email from me saying that I looked at it and said it was okay, then.
It was sometime, Dennis, it was some time ago.
No, the original, the original.
Well, I never throw anything away, so I turn my computer.
The original document, Dennis, was just about what we were trying to do. It didn't get into nuts and bolts of the contract.
It was a MOU or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to look for it. Well, well, go ahead. Why don't you just go ahead?
I, I thought, I thought the provision was that we, we had a say in, we had a say in the review process, but ultimately hiring and firing was decided, had to start at the Board of Ed. I mean, is that, does that pretty much suggest a, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, how could it not? It's ultimately a Board of Ed employee.
Yeah.
So.
The department was supposed to be, uh, overall town department. That was the concept.
Yeah, but I, I think the point in, as much as we may not like it, it kind of does make sense in the fact that her primaries, the, the primary responsibility in this case, there is a lot more work at the school than there's at the town hall, which is, which you and I have both agreed to as far as hours and workage.
I agree. I'm not going to debate that one.
No, so I think leaving it in the Board of Education hands is legitimate. I think the issue becomes that if we do have a problem, we have to be very systematic about documenting what our problem is. So that way, if we have something we need to bring to the Board of Ed, addressing an issue that we're clarified in what it is, you know? Can't be a personality conflict or something like that. It needs to be a legitimate concern. So.
All right, other members of the board. Murray, opinion?
I've already made my opinions known, I believe.
So what, what do you think we should do at this point, then?
I don't think we can do anything unless Dennis has any course, course of action.
And I have the same opinion as everyone else.
Adrian doesn't have the same opinion we do.
I don't necessarily. I do, I do have a possible solution, though, if the Board of Education agreed to it, you know? They, they have how many members? Seven? Is that correct?
Yep, they got seven.
And we have five, which really does leave, um, it still would leave control into the Board of Education hands. They'd have a higher number of people that maybe we could do something where, you know, if there were to be termination, it had to be by a majority of both boards voting in favor of. No.
I, I agree with that and that's where I would go, but I would make it two members of the Board of Education, the superintendent, Eric, and one member of the Board of Ed.
Say that again?
I think you said Board of Ed twice.
Well, three members, three members from the Board of Ed, so the superintendent and two members, and then a member from the Board of Selectmen and Eric. Eric and, and the superintendent are the person supposed to be working with this individual and evaluating them and.
So then you'd have two and one.
Okay, you'd have to have sixty percent.
Okay with that. I mean, it certainly, it certainly simplifies the process versus having a joint meeting to drive optimism.
So you, you're gonna, basically, you want to enact a, some kind of combined committee to do review and evaluation?
No, you are responsible for review and evaluation. This is just related to termination.
No, just for termination. Termination and discipline.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I found it. It's, it's, it, you know, it looks like you can get out of the contract on sixty days' notice.
And that's a problem is in and of itself.
I, yeah, I, I wrote an email to Eric saying, this is fine, but I pointed out the problems that we had in, in Wyndham and I, I said that if you have any, any need for any additional, I don't know who wrote it. It was written by, I'm sure, the Board of Ed attorney.
Dennis, it was. Dennis, do we have any problems? Have, you know, I cannot believe we would, but are there any problems if we wait on the, the contract and, and try to bring this forth to the Board of Education for next meeting?
Was this, was this approved by the town comp, by the Board of Selectmen?
No.
Okay.
No. So, but my.
Then, I mean, if you want to review it, it hasn't been approved yet.
Starting work. We need, we, we have absolute needs for this person. So.
Well, I saw her today. I was over there. She starts in two weeks, right?
Eric, I thought she started this week.
She starts on the fifteenth, the fifteenth.
All right, a week.
That's her first day of hire.
Do we have a problem if we don't have this in place? I'm not asking you, Eric. I'm asking you.
Yeah.
So you're asking for, uh, so you haven't approved this yet. So you, but you could approve it tonight.
We could approve it tonight.
All right, well, let me look at it and, uh, you know, we'll come back to it later. I'm just going to look at it.
I, I think my suggestion would be that we offer, we offer as part of our, as part of our shared services agreement with the Board of Education, we offer them your makeup for a Marina disciplinary, or, or for, for, for the top level position, that's a school board employee, we offer what you suggest to Jeff. And for the town in, town-based employee that, that splits and does some time at the school, the, the, the Marina's position, that we flip that. And so town side, we have, you know, two select board members, you know, superintendent Eric and one Board of Ed. And that, that would seem like a fair, a fair split.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
And that way, the primary employee for them, they have the most say in, I mean, employee at the town, we have a same, but also at the same time, you know, um, they can make a case if there's an issue with, with our employee as well. Because this isn't just an issue of the top level employee. I think this is an issue of, I, I think their board needs a say in, in our, in our, in the, in the second level position, more so than they currently have.
I agree.
It has to go both ways.
I, I have no problems with that. I mean, that's why I was asking for the contract. I wanted to know if we had signed anything with the Board of Ed related to that position.
I think there was some back and forth on it. I don't recall, I don't recall a vote in favor or against. I remember there was some, lots of back and forth, but.
Okay, so I have no problem with making that offer to the Board of, of Education. I think it's fair. I, and I do agree. I believe that the treasurer will spend sixty to seventy percent of her time at the Board of Education, forty to thirty percent of her time with the town and, and it's, and it's a little bit flipped. I mean, Marina probably could be fifty fifty. I would imagine, Eric, how much time is she spending now?
Uh, probably a little more on the town side than the school side, but part of that is the school is still filling in more heavily uh, with their old business manager just paying per diem.
Okay.
All right. Do we want to get some feedback? I mean, do we have Board of Ed members in here at all right now? But if they have an opinion that we should wait, you know, can point us in the right direction?
I honestly don't think that's fair to them. I mean, let them, let it go back to the board and, I mean, they're meeting next week. It's a fairly simple concept. It's not being, it's not trying to step on anything. It's just trying to outline what this is. There's a treasurer for the town. It's a business manager for the school. Dennis, what do you got?
Yeah, I, I don't want to say too much, but, uh, one of, one of, you know, one of the reasons why I said this was fine, and then with a big long caveat was because they're paying for it. And the other thing is, is that you, you can get out of it in sixty days and, and get your own finance director. And, and Eric said she's in a union. Which union would it be? It would be, it'd be the Board of Ed union, I'm sure.
No, that, what, he's talking about the second level employee, not that particular.
Level employee is, is Marina?
Yes.
So, and Marina is being paid for by the town.
The town, yes.
Okay, that's, that's very similar to what we have in Wyndham.
All right, but let's go back.
With that.
Let's go back. It's all town money. Every town.
Agreed. I think this is just about where someone is spending the most time and where an issue may come up and need to be addressed. So.
And I have no problem with the sharing termination. I have no pride. I think that's a smart, makes sense. It's just common sense. So.
She's going to be in their union.
She's not going to be.
No, no, the second level employee is in our union, Dennis.
The second level employee, that's Marina, right?
Yeah, she is in our union.
Well, this contract isn't about her. It's about the.
Yes, but because the two positions are basically flip flopped as far as time served, that's where it comes up.
It was never addressed, Dennis. That's the problem.
Well, this is where we ended up coming out when, when, when we had our big controversy. We had one, the, the finance director is an employee of the town and the, the just assistant finance director is an employee of the Board of Ed. And ours, it's a flip flop.
How about we minimize our controversy in the future? And I mean, it used, it's the same way, um, Eric, you're kind, uh, I don't know if your contract has a clause in it. If we, we chose to, I mean, it used to be, there used to be a clause somewhere in this, in the town. Did you have four out of five Board, Board of Selectmen members to terminate?
Does? Yep, you can fire me right now if you want to. All it takes is for you.
All right, motion down the table.
Right. But that, that, that was the point that it took.
Get me all excited.
And, and that's the same thing that should happen with, with the, the town and with the, uh, with this position.
So first of all, remember the assistance of union position. So I think you would be hard pressed to just decide to get four people to decide to vote to Terminator and make it stick. Could you do that with the finance director? Sure.
According to this contract, she's an employee of the Board of Education. She's not an employee of the town. It's a shared services contract. You're paying a dollar. That's one of the things that influenced me saying, okay, fine.
So basically what you're saying is, Dennis, if we don't like, if, if we have a problem and we end up letting her go and the school board decides to keep her, it's on them.
Well, I think you're under this, the way this is written now, your, your, your remedy would be, that's right. Your remedy, your remedy would be to, you have sixty day, you have, you can cancel the contract with sixty days' notice.
Then what was the point of doing any of it, Adrian?
Point of doing it?
No, Dennis, I didn't ask you. I asked.
Sorry, I, I'm, you know, once you get me going, you know.
I asked Adrian that. What was the, if that is truly the, the way that this is going to go, what was the point of doing all this? We were doing this to try to make the town more efficient.
Well, I, I think you're, I think we're doing it with a little bit of optimism, believing that, you know, this isn't going to be an issue, right? I mean, if, if we look at everything, I mean, obviously you always look at a contract from its worst point, never from its best. But I think optimistically, you know, we have a good candidate. They, they seem very well qualified. Their long-term positioning where they would like to be fits with the town and the school. So I think, I, I, I don't think, you know, we can look at every contract from the worst point of view, but I think in this particular situation, we have to look at it from the best point of view. I do think that there should be some commonality as far as termination, but, um, you know, again, part of the problem is that, um, maybe, you know, the, the Board of Education made some decisions based on what they got for our feedback. And their timing of their meetings versus the times of our meetings didn't line up in order to iron some of that stuff out before the hiring was done. So.
Okay, so where does this board want to go? Do we approve the contract that's out there for Sherry? And hope for the best?
I don't think approving the contract precludes the disciplinary action position.
So you're talking about the shared services agreement, I presume, not the contract?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah.
But then the shared service contract agreement needs to be referenced in the contract.
You know, I'd have to pull up. Unfortunately, my internet's not working nicely. I was trying to pull up this contract to, to look at the provision on termination.
There isn't any.
Yes, there is.
It just allows you to terminate, you know, your end of the deal and, and, uh, within sixty days.
What about actual termination from, from the Board of Ed?
The Board of Education.
But is there something in the? I understand that, Dennis, but is there something in the contract that says what the terms of termination are for the Board of Education then?
I don't think so.
By mutual consent, terminus, terminate this agreement at any time.
It said simply mutual consent?
Yeah.
Mutual consent of Board of Education or mutual consent of parties involved?
No, the Board of Education. I would, I, I mean, I believe that's why they left it so vague is it's a contract with the Board of Education. It's not this contract.
If it says mutual consent and the Board of Education.
She's an employee of the Board of Ed.
I understand that, Dennis, but if it says mutual consent and the Board of Education agrees to a shared services contract that includes the town on, on, and them on both sides of it, then it would be allowed. It would not counteract the contract. As long as the contract does not specifically say Board of Ed.
So this cut. So this cut, so the shared services agreement can be terminated by the Board of Ed or, or the Board of Selectmen. As they so choose with sixty days notice. She is an employee of the school board. So it is the school board's responsibility to make a decision whether she remains an employee or not. It is your right as the board to terminate the agreement with the school board. You can't duly employ somebody with the town and the school board. You know, a school board is its own entity. Right?
Yes. That's what we did in Wyndham and it did not work at all. That's why we had to go in this direction and do this. Alright, McGuire, I see you smiling.
Yeah, I. It, yeah, I, I disagree. I think you can, if the, if the school, if the Board of Education. Agrees to it. Then it would be allowed. If the Board of Education did not agree to it, then you can't force the issue, so.
Is she a union employee? I ask again.
No.
No.
Not, she's not in a union employee of theirs? She's just an employee without.
Yes.
Whatever personnel policies.
Executive level employee.
Okay, so she's an employee at, at Will?
Yes.
No, not, not a public employee. Never an employee at Will. You always have, you always have some degree of rights to a, to a, to a due process.
Are you talking about municipal, a municipal clause?
I'm talking about a municipal employee. You have constitutional rights. You, you can be fired, but you can't, you have to have to put you, you have to, they have to give you a right to a hearing. You have to go through a process. Even if you're not in a union. If you're a, if you're a government employee, the government. Is regulated by the Constitution. Constitution is to regulate governments, not.
Yeah, so the question is. Can the Board of Education in, in, you know, it's a mute point because it really just. We're, we're discussing something that's really gonna be up to them, so. You know, whatever you guys want to do, it doesn't matter.
But you can opt out in sixty days' notice. And then hire your own person.
Sixty days' notice.
Yeah, it doesn't do any good for us to opt out. It's not the point. The point is.
Breakdown situation.
The point is, the point is. Okay, the point is if, if we don't like what's going on, we get out of the, the, the situation. And now the town has to pick up an extra sixty thousand dollars of expenses.
Well, that's a.
That, that's the point. The point.
The downside.
You know, so.
Yeah, but if you have the same, the alternative is that you're both. You're, you're the, she has two masters. And, and, and then you end up fighting over whether one wants to terminate her or the other doesn't want to. That, we had that problem here.
Dennis, evaluation, the, the annual finance director shall be evaluated by the superintendent of schools with input from the town administrator in accordance with specific procedures. Established by the superintendent. That's what it says. Valuation.
That's in the same agreement I'm talking about here?
Yeah.
Alright, that's the cooperative agreement?
No, it's not the co, that's a contract for the.
I don't have that.
I sent it to you. Check your email.
Alright, we're, we're going to circle Jeff. I, look. I mean, does anyone else on the board want to fight this or, 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 I shouldn't say fight this, address this in, in some other specific level? Or are we agreed that this is the way it's gonna be and we're just gonna move forward?
Well, will we be able to bring her to our? Board meetings and talk to her about the budget at the school?
You're gonna be able to bring her to the board meetings and talk to her about a budget at the town, the budget at the school and anything else that has to do with finance?
About the school and town?
All of the above.
Yes.
But remember, when she works for the school board, she represents the school board. When she works for the town, she represents the town. There are times when there's always gonna be a conflict between those two.
I don't see how there's a conflict. Oh, it, when you, when you bring someone to a board meeting, you're asking them to answer questions. You're not asking them to defend a position.
Right, that's what I'm.
Eric, it's like, we don't ask you for your opinion, like your, your deep down and your deep seated opinion and a lot of what we ask you about. We ask you to present the numbers. Uh, with, with. Intelligence and with transparency.
I mean, look, Valerie, Valerie's job as a superintendent is to defend the budget, which she has been doing, right? Shannon's job as a Board of Education Chair is to do the same thing. For her board. The, the, the finance position is to make sure the numbers are correct and the numbers that we are getting and they are getting are correct. It's, we're asking her for factual information. We're not asking her for her opinion on the school.
She's an administrator, not a policymaker.
Right.
Just like Eric.
So. So it does not matter who she's quote unquote working for in that ten minutes because hopefully whoever she's working for, she's giving honest information. How much is online A section C? How much is online A section B? How much interest? How long are we gonna have to pay? Is this viable within the budget?
Okay. Okay, we're going, we're talking about something that, that's not really helping us make a decision, so.
But, 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 but Paul, that, that's really, that's really the essence of the whole issue here. That we need to. That's why we did this whole thing, Paul.
Yeah, but I don't see how she has quote unquote. Go ahead, Paul. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I, I, I just don't, I, I don't see how. I, I understand, Scott. I understand you feel that way. I don't know how to, I, I don't have an idea on how to fix that. So.
What are we trying to fix? I'm, I'm missing something. What is Scott's question that needs fixing? What is in, in his question that he needs fixing?
He sounds frustrated about something.
No, Scott.
I'm all set. As, as long as what Adrian's saying is factual.
Yeah, she's not a policymaker. She, she does, they, the school board goes to her and says, we would like a budget based on A, B, and C. We would like a budget based on C, D, and F. We would like you to figure out. You know, X, Y, and Z. She does not set policy. The Board of Education sets policy. The, the superintendent sets policy. It is her job to make that policy fit into a budget and to adjust the budget accordingly. So when she comes to us, we're asking her for facts. We're not asking her for anything else.
In the shared agreement, she has responsibility to you as well. For, for, to do the work.
I personally look at it, I see, and I look at it totally different. My, my, my opinion on this, that her responsibility is to the numbers. We're looking for factual information. End of discussion. You know?
Okay, so as opposed to continuing through, do we want to approve this contract tonight so that we can get it signed and she can start on the fifteenth without any issues?
Does anyone have any objection to that? Let's start there.
I'm fine. Let's go. So we'll make a motion.
I'm fine. I make a motion that you accept the contract as submitted to Eric and reviewed by us.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? We've had enough? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, we are moving on to appointments. The Beautification Commission appointments of Kathy DeRosa, Bill DeRosa, Lauren Westenberg, Lorraine Listwell, Joan Ross. And Valerie Gervani.
I'm gonna make a motion to. Yeah, I'm gonna. Sorry, I blip. My internet's going in and out. Did, do you want me to make the motion, Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead. Just make a motion to appoint the Beautification Commission.
I'm, I'm motion to appoint the following members to the Beautification Committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Kathy and Bill DeRosa, Lorraine Westenberg. Lorraine Liswell, Joan Ross, Jim Ross, and Valerie Gervani.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Legal if you don't call and opposed?
Excuse me?
Is it le, is it a legal vote if you don't call opposed, abstaineds? I'm just curious.
Dennis, do you have any?
What's the question? I was. I was still mulling over the, uh, the agreement. I think it's, I think it's wonderful. I'm glad you passed it. I wish I had known it was on the agenda because I, I didn't. Anyway. What's the question about votes?
Jeff has a habit of, of saying of everyone in favor or anyone in favor. Or calling in, you know, those in favor, and then he doesn't always call opposed or abstained. Is it still legal?
That's because I'm sorry to my, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Mandeville. Everyone there voted yes.
You should have a, the, the votes are supposed to be recorded in the minutes. That's one of the things that's required. Absolutely required in minutes is to vote.
Amanda, Amanda, what was the last vote total?
Five zero zero.
And you know that because Jeff called abstained or, 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 or against?
Everybody raised their hand and you said yes.
I'm, I'm not on video, so how did I raise my hand?
You said yes.
You said yes. Be saying yes. We don't know that.
We're all raising our hands. We're on video.
Alright.
Oh, my gosh.
I would prefer you to call, please. So there's no question. There could be a deep fake out there. I don't know what's going on.
Remember, remember what?
Adrian, Adrian, can you see my face?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, good job. Alright, so let's keep going here. We have, uh. Six A, Megan Lally resigned as the chair. To the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, and she's taking a position as a regular member. Eric, um. He stepped away, but. Are we, uh, having luck filling that chairmanship?
No, George, George is taking that.
Yeah, the, the chairmanship is already filled. You don't have to do anything with that. That's just, she's, she had to step down because she's having vision problems. Whether it's permanent or temporary, nobody knows, but, uh, the commission's in good hands. No action needed on your part.
Okay, and then we have six B, Susan Magri from the Building Department resigned. Effective when, Eric?
Uh, effective today.
Today. Okay. Do we have any discussion that we need to have on that issue? Uh, we shouldn't, so we're not going to. Let's go on to, to section seven, item seven, the town administrator's report.
Okay, so, uh. Let's cover the highlights for the first time in a long time. We are under the, uh, ten threshold. So we're actually, uh, no longer one of the red towns. Um, right now, our COVID infection rate for the day is, uh, about four times lower or five times lower than it was at its peak. So we're in pretty good shape there. Uh. Da, 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 da. As I mentioned, Susan Magri, she sent me a letter of resignation today at six stating that it was effective immediately. Uh, I told her, hand her keys in and good luck. Um. And called it good. So. Uh, the F five fifty dump truck, we've gone back and forth. They bought a couple other units. I think we're going back to the original plan, which is get the red one that's right next door. Um, they had another one that we could have gotten that was green. Um, and there was one in New York that was green. Um, advantages and disadvantages to all of them. Right now, we're just gonna get the red one and be done with it. Uh, da, 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 da. We're making progress on the connectivity grant finally. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled. With Rick Zulik of Datum Engineering, um, to go over the forestry stuff. Um, we are also making progress on the town alarm. Uh, situation, as you know, TN is no longer gonna be monitoring. Um, we will have ended up bringing in four companies to do evaluations and we're gonna, you know, try to go through the reports and, and. Make the best recommendation we can about, you know, we're getting, gonna end up with four fairly different. Concepts. So we'll have to go through and, and choose the best, uh, path forward after that.
Are you weighing those out to CIP or what's the route for that at this point?
Uh, I haven't even really decided that. There's kind of two facets to it. The first facet. Is what company we use for the evaluation? And the second part of that is what upgrades do we do? So those are kind of two different parts. Um, I don't think CIP needs to weigh in on what. Method we do for the monitoring, but certainly would have to go to CIP for the potential upgrades to Public Works. Um, in other locations. Um. We are currently the, the. Uh, we had an, an issue with the, uh, alarm in the library not calling, faulting, calling out to TN. Um, when we, I, I asked Paul Cheney to come in and evaluate it. He did. He looked at it. And I said for, for ha ha's, why don't you actually set the alarm off and see if it calls out properly? So we set the alarm off in the building and. It didn't call out to TN. So we have a problem with that. There's no telling how long the library's been without. An alarm system that actually calls out. Um, but it's clearly not functional at the moment. We're working on it. Um. It's not gonna be inexpensive to do the, uh, work at the garage. Um, you know, but we're not far enough along to have firm estimates. We've only really got one firm estimate at this point. Uh, we did get the new sign for the transfer station that came in and looked awesome. Um, so we have a sign that's actually, uh. You know, readable again, which we haven't had in quite some time. Um, Public Works has been out patching with cold patch. You know, getting some of the bad potholes that have been reemerged. And that's pretty much what I have unless you have specific questions for me about my report or other things.
The pictures you have of the roadwork on the, um. Where is that?
That's on Skinner Hill Road. Yeah, those are some of our deepest wheel ruts. Skinner Hill's in pretty rough shape.
Did you get that culvert cleaned? Is it running now?
Yeah, yep. Not me personally. I just took a bunch of pictures. Public Works.
Um. How did they get in there to clean them out? What, what's our decision? Sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish, finish answering Scott's question.
What was the question again, Scott?
How did they get in there to clean them out? Carefully.
Well, in this case, they're just shoveling the leaves that are blocking the entrance to the pipe.
Yep. Um. Eric, is there a protocol that we have to decide whether we're cold patching or hot patching? Or, I mean, I know we're talking about getting a, a hot patch unit, so. Um. Does cold patching now preclude hot patching later?
Hmm, well, I suspect that's a better question to ask Jay Tuttle, who's also on this call. Jay, you want to answer that?
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, didn't know if I had to be unmuted by somebody else. Uh, as far as, well, right now the plants aren't open yet. Uh. If you really gotta get some hot patch. Uh, you can schedule it. Here and there, depending on what plants are open in the area. But this time of year, the cold patch. Uh, we can go in and. Take care of those, uh, potholes and there's some more popping up that, uh. Uh, that I've seen and gotta go out and pay attention to. And I also rely on anybody calling them in. You know, we, as we drive around, if we see them, we mark them down and we try to go out and, and take care of them. Um, and there are more that we need to take care of.
Uh, yeah, I think my question was just whether. If we're doing them now with cold patches, it's gonna screw us up if we want to do a more permanent patch with hot later.
No, the cold patch, I mean, if you put hot over the cold patch. In different areas, the, the two will blend pretty well. Not, it's not like it used to be a long time ago where the. The diff, you know, uh, dissimilar materials, chemicals, they can kind of interact with the, each other, not work so well. That, that doesn't quite happen so much anymore.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Jay, just because you're, um. What other issues are going on at the Public Works Department that you'd like to share with us?
Um.
You know worms.
Well, we're moving along with, uh, getting equipment ready for the season. Uh. Kind of calling it our, our. Uh, dead zone area between, you know, waiting for the, uh. Weather to pop so we can get out on the roads. Uh. And just. Anticipating, getting going.
Okay, and your, your new sweeper?
Yep, sweep, sweepers in. We're, uh, getting the parts that we need to get it going. We've got, uh. That's underway. Uh, more parts came in today. Some stuff that we gotta get going. Um.
Jay, I know what one of the things, one of the things we used to do, we got away from because we didn't have the staffing to do it was we used to go around and knock down the sides of the roadway where the sand built up on different town roads. Is that something that we could address now if we're kind of in that dead zone?
You mean, as far as like at the intersections?
No, so we get, we've we've had like, I mean, this is one of the reasons that like Wells Road needed to get redone last year is that we for a while, we just weren't picking up the sand at the end of the season. And so it would build up on the roadways on the sides. And you kind of get that mounting. It ends up holding the water on the on the, you know, and what it almost makes a curb.
Oh, the ed, you mean, you're talking about edging? Scraping scraping the road edges.
Scraping the edges, right.
Yeah, no, we are gonna be going out and doing that. Just not quite ready to get out there and do that yet because we're trying to fish finish up a few pieces of equipment.
No, that's fine. I was just asking because to be honest, it hadn't been done for a couple of years very well. And lots of residents have asked why we weren't doing that more as sort of a, you know, a way to help, you know, maintain roads a little bit better. So I'm just curious, something that was in our, you know, in our
No, that's in the wheelhouse. You know, my 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 hope is that once we get underway and, you know, we plan, well, we're planning for this year, but as we move forward, we also try to work that in a little, some of that before winter starts, and then we can wrap things up in the springtime, you know, as when winter's ending, that, you know, we we start our roadwork in the fall is kind of what we kind of want to do eventually. You know, in preparation for the following year's work, the following construction season. So if there's points during the winter time where the weather, there's a weather break, we can go out and continue some of that work.
Right, and and Jay was about three weeks ago, you were out, and I know you did a big section on Long Hill, you scraped the sides on Long Hill and also on a big chunk of Bear Swamp. So they were out doing that about a month ago when when it thawed and they had a warm spell.
Yeah, I just know we're getting nice weather this week, so that's all.
Yep. Well, unfortunately, we're still working on some equipment right now, so we gotta make sure that stuff's ready to go.
Okay.
We'll we'll squeeze in the roadwork. We'll get it done.
Anybody else have any questions? Jay, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
In the old business section, Eric, you've already given eight A, which is a COVID nineteen update. I'm assuming you don't need to give anything else.
Uh, no, the only question is Chamberlain Pond cleanup. I saw that Jeff Murray had requested that the conservator correction, the Inland Wetlands Commission you know, rule on what they want to do with Chamberlain Pond in terms of pond cleanup. So I'm just bringing that to your attention. I know the Board of Selectmen was already on board with that.
It's table till next month. It's table till next month.
Yep.
HC was disposition of old equipment. Anything to report on that, Eric?
Uh, no, we haven't actually disposed of the equipment, so I think that can be tabled for now.
Okay. All right, nine is new business. Nine A is the town budget discussion. Do we have anything else we want to discuss related to the town budget?
The only question I had was the Board of Selectmen had said they wanted to present to the Board of Finance. Did you, as a board, still want to do that at one of the meetings or are you just leaving that to me? Or how are you, you want to proceed on that?
Well, does this board want to sit there and jointly have a meeting with the Board of Finance? I know Jeff Murray.
If we did that, it should have been before the last meeting because they pretty much discussed the town budget at the last Board of Finance meeting.
Well, I think they're still going through it, aren't they?
No, they pretty much went through that. I think they're gonna look at the school board proposal next meeting. I mean, they they pretty much went extensively through our budget and Eric assisted. So, I mean, I was on the meeting, what it went until about ten thirty, Eric.
Yeah, I suspect they're gonna have that the town a couple more times before this is over.
Well, I mean, so what's your take on it, Jeff? Do you feel like feel like there's still room for us to to input? You know, and explain our methodology? Do you think Eric got that across already?
I think Eric was a good focal point for the answers and basically they're the basically the feeling I got from the Board of Finance is, you know, we we've gone through this multiple years and we've we pretty much whittled it down to a bare bones budget. And they didn't, they really felt like there was not too much that could be done with the proposal that we sent them.
Okay.
So, I mean, I that could be that could change, but that's that's kind of pretty much the message I got from the board as they went through it.
And Eric, does the Board of Finance need any any other assistance on the capital requirements they were asking for, the roadwork and so on?
No, I think they're, you know, we've, because I've been talking to them about capital requirements all along. You know, long before we got to budget season. So I think they they pretty much knew what the budget was gonna be and what was coming at them. So I don't think there's any there's no real surprises from the town's side, at least as far as the Board of Finance is concerned.
All right, nine B, updates to Veterans Monument Park. Jerry Wright had provided us a letter that I believe everybody saw. There are some additional upgrades to Veterans Memorial Park. Well, it's not Veterans Memorial Park. It is the Monument Park, excuse me. It's a different Veterans Memorial Park, which is down on Long Hill. And then there's the Veterans Monument Park, which is on Route Six. So the question is, is are any of the items that have been requested within our purview to sit there and move over to the Board of Finance to sit there and try to get in? Eric, is there any money that we've left laying about that could be utilized for this?
I mean, if it's, if the board decides it's a priority, then the most logical place to go for funding for this would be to use low SIP funds.
Well, I mean, I I I think there needs to be a discussion about this candidly before we do that.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question, Eric? What's the status right now with the electrical? Are we trying to move forward on that yet? Or are we still, is that still getting kicked around?
I mean, CIP has approved it, but nothing I have not, I certainly haven't given the electrician the go ahead because you had one idea about what you wanted to do there. And Kirk wanted another shot at the utility company to see whether they'd let us do it off the existing pole using the existing conductor. And I don't have the, you know, answer from either of those yet at this point. So, I mean, you know, that's on hold until we have more information. And I would presume that if, you know, because it's essentially a permanent thing, we're adding a meter that that should have buy off from at least Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
Well, yeah, I mean, I still, my my question really went back to just whether or not what size panel do we have at the museum and would that handle? You know, would that, instead of having yet another meter? You know, if that would handle what we want to do lighting wise? So, you know.
There's a hundred amp panel at the museum. A reasonably good condition, hundred amp panel at the museum.
So it should be able to handle what we're talking about, but yeah. So, you know, I understand there's a list of things that we would like to do down there. I think my concern is that we have a habit of, you know, and I've had this conversation with Jerry that we have a habit as of a town of running into things and trying to do them, not really understanding the consequences of the cost of what we're doing. For instance, you know, we were talking about doing irrigation down there before we talked about fixing the soil, you know? So now that's gotten backed up and now we're like, okay, well, we need to do you know, soil and then irrigation and, you know, blah, blah, blah. I just feel like we need to have a more comprehensive plan on how to utilize that space. You know, I think it's great that we have a monument and we have a, you know, nice, a nice space down there. But I'd like to, if we're gonna be spending money, given that we you know, we don't have a great playground in town, we don't have a great you know, we don't have, we have a lot of opportunity down there that I think we're leaving on the table if we move forward with this right now. I I'd love to see if we can try to purchase that property next in the museum and then develop all of this together, you know? So that we do something more with the trailhead. Maybe, maybe that's a place that we talk about putting a playscape or something. You know, that's accessible to people, you know, in and that adjacent property, you know? So it's near the trailhead, gives us more parking. We have a little bit more going on down there and then improve that park, maybe even put a walking area around there, put some type of separation between Route Six and us, even if it's just low bushes to break the sound a little and to give a barrier between the road, you know, and the monument without blocking the view of the monuments, you know? So I I'd like to see a better vision of what we really want down there versus let's just keep band-aiding this thing and, no. That's my own take on it, but I know there are different opinions, so.
Anyone else?
You know, I thought that Eric had gone over this pretty well and decided. And, you know, I was involved with it. Jerry was involved with it and some other people got involved with it and I thought that we came up with a you know, a plan for the whole area. And
I haven't heard anything about the trailhead.
No, we're just talking about the Memorial Park.
I understand that, but to be honest with you, I'm just being honest. I don't want to spend thirty thousand dollars on a park that isn't friendly to to the whole town.
You know, I I think the gym or whatever the play play area where it was gonna go at the Memorial Park.
Yeah, Adrian, I don't think putting a playground on the side of Route Six is probably the best choice.
Whatever it is, I mean, you know, whether it's a picnic area, something, you know? And again, I understand your concern, but if you put a break, if you put a low break between six you know, and that and that park area, that actually make that a nice little park, you know? Whereas right now, we just, we're basically putting up monuments, you know?
I would, I would sit there and I would tell you one thing, though, Adrian, that I have been I've been at this six years, and the one thing that always bothers me is the visible areas that people see of Andover. And that that location is one of the two visible things that people see related to Andover. There's the whole, there's the whole section over the post office, which I realize is not our property. But if I, Eric is smiling. I've been saying this for six years that that property makes me sad every time I drive by it, that it looks so poor. And it's not that the Veterans Monument looks poor, but it could look a lot better if we gave it a little bit of love. I I think that's all. I think that's all that's being brought up by Jerry and by.
No, and listen, I don't disagree that it needs some love. I think it needs but I think the love that it needs is a long term plan of care. You know, and it needs to be, it needs to become that space. If we're gonna spend thirty grand on it, needs to be a bigger part of this community and not just, not just a signpost.
First clarify for the public that the exact amount of money that we're talking about first, Adrian, I think. I mean, Jerry's Jerry's monument is one amount and the rest of it is a different amount. The rest that the town is gonna be taken care of is is only like, how much is it, Jeff? Eighteen thousand or something?
No, it's thirty, it's thirty four thousand dollars, to be real.
For the whole town side?
Yep.
Well, that's what Jerry is asking. Which, listen, I'm not sitting there saying Jerry's number is accurate. I'm just telling it, it's been brought to us. We need to start thinking about.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I think Jerry, this number is low. You know, to be honest with you.
Well, I'll sit there and I'll go through it. He's got forty two hundred dollars, which CIP is supposedly put forth for an electric upgrade. He's got six thousand dollars for a new well, fourteen thousand dollars for hydro seeding, five thousand dollars for an irrigation system and five thousand dollars for three new flagpoles. And I know from other things that have been discussed, the flagpoles are potentially being put forth on a grant and but listen, this is, this is just us or deciding that we want to make we wanna, we wanna put some resources into something that is so visible for this community. So, and and that's it. And I'm not sitting there saying that we need to decide that we're gonna do this right now. But we should, as a group, decide that we're gonna, we want to do something, whether it's from low SIP. And and Adrian, I have no problem if you want to work with Jerry and Scott and come up with a a more detailed plan as to what you're doing. I'm with Jeff Murray. That is not the place for a playground.
It's but it's not, it's not about a playground or anything. My my guys' point is when we start talking about thirty K in a budget year when we already have, already have issues. If we're taking lots of funds to do that, then that means we're not, we don't have those lots of funds available to do repairs on town buildings that we know are suffering and we know have some issues that we need to address.
And just like we know that this monument park has issues as well. I mean, I can't tell you how many times the previous beautification committee resigned, just saying they wanted water so they don't have to take buckets all over the place.
They couldn't have, they didn't have water.
I get that, but we literally have buildings that need repair, that need to be.
We will always have buildings that need repair.
Right, so let's start by by trying to catch those up before we spend any more on something that you know, has had, it's, you know, Jerry has done a great job getting monuments and and things together to to spruce up that park. I know it needs more than that, but, you know, we're, we already have a a pretty hefty budget. I just, I can't support it. And listen, as as a vet, I it's not that I disagree with that, with that, I just don't think that now's the right time to be going to the public to ask for thirty thousand dollars for the park.
Okay. Jerry, what would you like to bring to us?
Well, I'd like to chime in and say if the town, or I should say probably Adrian, is not willing to support the monument park, then would it be kind of embarrassing if I went out and solicited the money and got donations to fix that park for our town? I think that would be a sad, sad day that I would have to go to veterans groups and ask them for money to fix up a town park. Now, I understand what Adrian's saying, acquire the state property. But isn't that something that's been in the works for quite a few years now? Why does it have to fall on the back of the monument park to get that spruced up? Let's do it in sections. It may be another two or three years before you get the right to have the other state property. You can't waste that long.
Yeah, for me.
I'm talking, Adrian. So right now, let's concentrate on making our monument park look really nice. The irrigation and the loaming and the hydro seeding will not be done until probably September or October anyway. Okay, but I am working also with an organization that is, could possibly come up with some life. And if that happens, I I would have to say shame on on Andover for not kicking in some money on this. It's your ground. When I'm done on June fifth, that monument is given to the town of Andover. As of today, I raised nine hundred dollars more and I am one hundred dollars shy of thirty thousand dollars.
I I
Okay, so I do have a nice little nest egg put away to maintain that monument. We are gonna, I'll be talking to Jay Tuttle, I'll be talking to Jeff and Eric. We're gonna move it down a little bit from where it was and maybe put pavers all the way down to the cannon. Okay, so that lessens the fact of having more loan done and more hydro seeding done. I would think around the flagpoles, there shouldn't be grass around the flagpoles. It should be pavers. Okay, I have enough money put away to probably do that. So I'm willing to put extra money into that.
Jerry, we 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 absolutely appreciate everything you're doing. This is, this is really, and then listen, I understand what Adrian is saying. I do, I do believe we have to look at things that are. There's a lot of things about image and to me, that is one place. There's a lot of things about image and and to me, that is one place that is about the image of our community, it's right next to the.
It is.
Most visible thing in our community, which is that walk, that covered bridge that hasn't been maintained since we got it. And and if I would read Diane Granier's mind, it hasn't been turned back over to the state, so we have no idea if that was ever done correctly. So there's a lot of things about that area that we need to sit there and take care of and we should, we should put some resources to it. Now, I understand what Adrian is saying. It's a. You know, I think every year is gonna be difficult for us, but I think we need to make it a priority and maybe we don't. We're not gonna invest, I mean, I I would tell you flat out, Jerry, I don't think there's any way that we probably get all of it done this year. But we can take it in steps and we should take it in steps and we should sit there and get the electrical and to me, get the the well drilled. At a minimum.
Exactly. You know, I see that Jerry Wright's been working for years on this monument thing, for years. And all the time and effort veteran has put into the town to get this looking nice, and I think that we need to step up. And do our part to make that place look nice.
So Jerry, can I ask a question, you're saying you have thirty thousand dollars, that that's to cover your, that's to cover the monument itself. Not this, that's not towards this work. Is that correct?
Yes, it's only to cover the monument, uh I have a UH helicopter coming in. It's a nineteen sixty-eight era uh coming in on the fifth of June. To uh for our ceremony. And we'll be picking out an LZ for him to land close by. Uh and I'd like to donate some money towards that helicopter, we may need that again. Um, there are a couple of other things. You gotta understand, I ran a business for, like you, Adrian, for thirty-one years and I did not spend. Except for what I had, so if I needed new truck, I saved the money, I bought the truck. I didn't anticipate the work coming in. I made sure that it was there before I bought the vehicle, so with this park. I really love Andover, okay, and I really like the park area down there. Is Jay Tuttle still on? Hi Jay?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask you for, and Eric is for a favor, uh I have a law, a sweeper. And I'm willing to come down this spring with about six veterans and rake and sweep that park. With a sweeper, the grass area and put it up on the road. Could I get your dump truck for a day to haul that debris away and I'll bring my tractor down and I'll load it in your dump truck if you could get it out of there? Is that possible?
Oh, by all means. Alls you gotta do, just give me a call, Jerry, and we'll get together and plan it out, what we need to do.
Yeah, I've already talked to the veterans, we're gonna spend the day down there, we're raking, cleaning uh and make it look nice. If you look, I just sent Scott a picture yesterday of when we put all the flags in there for Memorial Day. That black grass was green as could be, there's only certain spots that are really bad and that's because it needs to be irrigated. And the the well needs to be put in first because they make a mess. When they're drilling, they make a mess, so you can't loam and hydro seed until the well is done. That has to be a priority.
Right, yeah. Yeah, Jerry, when you get some time, just give me a call, we'll get together and uh bang out some thoughts.
You got it, thank you, Jack.
Yep.
Alright, so we have to keep this one um. In front of us, uh maybe next meeting, we can talk about utilizing some LoSiP funds related to the well. I think that would be beneficial and I think the rest of uh the members of the board of selection should get together. And communicate with each other regarding this to sit there and see what level of spending is uh.
Well, yeah, if you're gonna do the well, you need to do the, figure out the electric, those two have to go together, so.
I agree.
You know, so to me, those were, those would be the two that, and the electric was approved by CIP, so it's already in front of the board of finance.
Yeah, the the unfortunately, though, the electric was approved without, there's a couple of things in there. I just wanna find out if instead of putting another meter. We can pull off a panel we already have in place.
I I understand, I definitely understand what you're trying to do, Adrian, I think it's a great idea, I just think. I just think that we need to look at those areas that that. Our image issues for the town and do everything we can to make them look it, look it, that's, that's a personal opinion and I'm only one of five voting members, but that's what I believe.
I I don't have a problem picking some of those things off of there, I have a problem with thirty K this year.
Now, I don't think anyone else is gonna have a problem.
Well, if we had a plan five or six years ago, this wouldn't be a problem.
There you go, so Jeff says it, says it exactly the way it is.
We need a plan, and you know, one thing is, uh Adrian, I know you wanna pull up a panel, but wouldn't it be cheaper just to put the the meter socket on the pole and. So they have the trench, trench all the trench all the way over there?
Yeah, but here's the thing, if you, if you put a meter socket on the pole, you are gonna pay for that meter socket from now till the end of time. Whether you're using enough electricity to justify it or not, you have a minimum socket requirement, right? And so, I mean, I I did the math and and basically two and a half years, trenching paid for itself. That that monument's not gonna be there for 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 five years or ten years, it's gonna be there for thirty or forty.
Alright, just a que, it was just a question, that's all, I'm just asking a question.
That's why I'm asking for it, and and that's, and I guess that's what I'm talking about, is that we wanna look at this as a long-term project. That we, so that we do it in the right way, so that it's efficient for the town, so we'll still have the money to maintain it. You know, and keep it looking good.
Does Jerry need electricity where he's gonna be putting his monument also?
He needs low voltage lighting.
Right, yes. Yeah, I I I'm putting the lighting in, it's all, it's all volt, low voltage lighting. So that's already figured into our budget.
So if we do the um, if we, if we did, uh if we do an outdoor panel or sub, I'm sorry, a sub-panel versus a meter socket, they may, that may give us. Or should give us what we need, the question is whether or not. The panel is good enough, it sounds like it's a hundred watt panel, so we just need to figure out what the load is on it right now. But there's no well at the museum, so it shouldn't be an issue.
There is a well.
There is a well.
There's a well at the museum?
Right in back.
Yep.
I thought we didn't have a septic for the museum.
We don't have a septic for the museum, we have a well.
Yeah, well.
Okay, now I'm really confused, so we have a well, but no septic.
I correct, I think there, there is a septic, Eric, there is a septic.
Well, we don't have a ba, do we, I, we don't have a bathroom in the museum, do we?
No, we do not. The museum until, up until the time where the new town hall was built, that museum had an outhouse. It was one of the last outhouses permitted in the state of Connecticut, cause it took a special, you know.
Dispensation, yeah.
A special dispensation to get permission to put in an outhouse.
Why am I not surprised?
That's, that's a piece of uh history that we need to share on our Facebook page.
No, we did not.
So question is, is that well, is that well operational at the, at the museum?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Why couldn't we trench and just put the pipe in? And not drill another well?
Eric, uh Scott.
That well is not good at the museum.
Is that separate from the well that has the, is that the one that has the underground bank? Access bank?
I'm I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So is is the, is there a second well for the park?
Yes.
Yes, so we actually have two wells down there.
Right. Neither of one, e- e- each one of them really are no good. They're not, they're not really, they're not wells, either one of them.
So they're both shallow?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 the one at the museum is deep, but it, it doesn't give up the amount of flow that we need to have.
So we did have that tested.
Yeah, we put a new pump in it.
Okay. But we're not using it for anything else, correct?
Yeah, no, they, they use it for watering at the museum.
For watering, but that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Correct, and it keeps up with that, but.
So why can't we just set the sprinklers at the the veterans, the memorial to.
Run at a different time.
You run a different day.
Cause it, it doesn't, it doesn't provide enough flow. A consistent flow. Me and Eric already went over this whole thing with.
Just asking a question.
Yeah, neither of those wells has. They both have a very short, a very lousy refresh rate.
Right.
Um, you know, neither one of them are really sufficient for any kind of serious irrigation system.
So do we put one in for both, do we put one in for the museum and the the park? Just one well feeder from the museum and then pipe down to the park?
Well, if you're truly thinking long-term, you should because.
I mean, I'm trying to think long-term here, I'm not trying to think in the moment.
Eventually, you're gonna get the state property that's next to it to put a reasonable septic system in. And if we had a long-term plan, we would put a bathroom at that.
I I just, I just wanna say thank you to the board of selectmen for reinforcing my point that this maybe hasn't been a fully evolved plan.
Could, but we have trouble getting anything done in our community. So, so we have to take what we can when we can, so yes, we should think about putting a well on that property and we should really think about putting a well that will. Sufficiently. Provide for the narration system, watering at the uh old town hall and a potential bathroom at the old town hall.
What a not, what a novel idea.
Yeah. You know, this board actually is fairly creative and has a lot of good ideas, I don't know if you know that, Mr. Mandeville.
We do, we do.
I'm rehearing every day, Mister, Mister McQuire.
Yes, so, but, I mean, in all honesty, you're trying to save money, do you really want the mission creep? So now you're gonna take the old town hall and you're gonna put in bathrooms, which means you're gonna heat it. Except it's not insulated, cause the boat, the building was built in the eighteen hundreds.
Eric, did we say we were gonna do this today? We said.
We said five, six-year plan, plan down the road.
I would tell you that building, that building is um, it is. If it was lit properly during the winter, that building is really kinda pretty.
It is, very nicely.
Nice thing, do you imagine the Christmas decorations that we could throw up on that building and make Andover look kinda cool?
Imagine if you could use the museum as a welcome center on the trailhead.
Oh my god, you could have bikes in the back that people could rent and we could have a recreational group that participated in this town. Think of all those things, Eric, and Eric, that's why you are in your position, because you are the friendliest Andover person ever. You will do a great job there, Eric, right? But listen, this is not anything, this is just things that we could think of. I would love that property to look great, I think that building in the winter would look wonderful. So, do I think I would like to put a bathroom in that building, Eric, yes, do you think I'd like to figure out how to do it, yeah, do I think I can do it tomorrow, no?
No, but we can, if we plan this out correctly, pick off some things we can do this year and look towards a long-term plan. You know, um.
Yeah, like adding to your comment, I would, I would, I would pursue a well at the the museum and actually pipe the water over and because your feeder's over there for power.
Yep.
It would save a lot of costs and it's irrigation pipes cheaper to run than, you know, bearing a line.
Yep.
For a well, then we're gonna end up with a well issue at the, at the uh museum down the road, so if we can get a well that'll supply them both, let's, let's look at it, let's get it done.
Um, I, if Jerry has time, I'll reach out to Jerry and maybe we can go down there and walk a little bit and see what. What his, what his vision of the park is right now and, you know, maybe how we can. Do the most effective things, if that's what we decide to do. You know, and then move forward from there.
Alright, we'll keep this on the agenda moving forward. So, um nine C, um. Let's see, go back up here. I gotta do nine I, nine C. Is uh library mural vandalism restitution update.
Uh Diane, do you have anything? You're muted.
Uh, the the last I heard was that um. The the board of selectmen in the library had sent a letter to the courts, um you you have that in your, your package. And the uh, the court date was February twenty-fourth. And um. We don't, didn't hear the answer and I was, I don't know how we would get the answer, Dennis, maybe you can tell us. I called the, the lawyer, I called uh the court and I was told to um contact the supervisor at the Attorney General's Office. I did that and that was two weeks ago and uh haven't got a response. Not that we need to know, but it's just, we're curious as to, did they accept any of our terms or things like that, so. That's where I am, is just waiting to find out how and maybe Dennis, you can tell us how we could find out what, what the result was.
Probably the prosecutor would know.
That's who I called and they referred me to the uh um.
Attorney General?
Attorney General's office.
They're two different, Attorney General just deals with civil matters, prosecutor is criminal. Or the state, maybe, maybe they refer you to the state's attorney's office, so.
But was there a victim?
A state attorney, I'm sorry, it was the state's attorney's office, yes.
Yeah, well, this is, I I, from what I read in the, in the materials, the, in Eric's report, um. The the, these guys were applying for uh accelerated rehabilitation.
Yeah.
Yes, only one. One of the three.
Yeah, okay. What about the other two, are you just talking about that one, one guy?
We're just, only one asked for it and.
Really?
Yeah, the the other two have some more serious issues.
Okay.
To them, so. That wasn't.
How can, how can we get the information? If there's any available to the library and to the board of selectmen?
Well, the 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 prosecutor should know. I mean, the, the, you know, uh, if you want me to get it, I'll get it for you, okay?
Excellent.
I have.
That would work.
I have connections in certain places.
That would be perfect.
You know.
You got Dennis.
Like in Andover, you know?
That's right. Alright, uh nine.
I'll put you on the top of the good boy list.
That's not always a, a good thing, but, okay, I I will work with Diane on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll find, we'll get to the bottom of this.
Alright, nine D, roadwork review, uh Eric.
Uh, so Paula asked that we put on two items under roadwork review. The first was road line painting and the second one was paving review and future plans. So uh I assume the question regarding painting was. Uh, my unwillingness to put a line stripe in the Lake District, I assume that was the issue? That you wanted to discuss?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, we discussed it before as a board.
I know, can we, can we just get a quick review of your position on why we didn't continue the line striping after the roadwork? Just so every, for the.
Sure, you know, my position is simply that it's safer for pedestrians. Um, in a high pedestrian and cycling usage area to not have a stripe than it is to have a stripe. Because a lot of people will not cross the center line to pass and due to the road widths that we have. Um, that puts them inside the three-foot required uh distance that they're supposed to keep. With a pedestrian or a cyclist. Um, and therefore, it's, it's better not to strike than to strike. In an area that has low traffic speeds or is supposed to have low traffic speeds. And has high counts for pedestrians and cyclists, which is really the Lake District. That's my take on it.
Okay, well, a couple of my concerns and in this, you know, and I, and I got a couple of emails from a couple of residents. And, you know, I drove down there on a couple of those really dark rainy nights where it's really hard to see. And there aren't, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of reflective material or anything on the roadway. Marking curves and turns and, I mean, when it gets dark down there and foggy and wet and that real black, you know. Dark nights, it's, it's kinda hard to follow the roads sometimes, if you, especially if you don't know where you're going. So, I mean, I've even had problems on Long Hill coming up the road. I mean, the line, the line actually tells you, you know, if you're over far enough, you know, with an oncoming car, you know, that's, that's kind of, it's, it's not more cyclists, but. Cars and um, I think the state law allows you to cross the L-line, right, to overtake a cyclist or a pedestrian?
It absolutely does.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't consider.
Doesn't matter what the law is, it matters what behavior is. And go stand out there and watch cars and pedestrians interact. And cars often do not cross the center line, they squeeze the pedestrian because that line is their spot. And by removing it, you eliminate that issue.
I mean, you know I'm a cyclist, Eric, I, I mean, I run, I mean, you, it. If people are gonna run, run next to you, they're gonna run next to you, it's kind of the way I've kind of figured it out, I mean, most people, most people give you the room. Um, you know, ninety percent of the time, most of the people down there are residents and they give you the room, but I'm just more concerned about safety. And be able to find, follow the road when it's dark and and wet, it's just, it's, it's a really hard road to follow when it's dark like that and. There's curves, like if you didn't know where you're going, I mean, you could end up right in the lake some nights if you didn't, if you didn't know where you were going, I mean. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I I I just think uh going forward, we should. I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I, I, I just think, uh, going forward, we should consider striping, striping the road. It's just, uh, it's my, it's my, my opinion, but, um, as somebody that's drove down there a couple of nights and just to see what it was like, I consider it kind of a safety issue.
I'll, I'll sit there and I'll give you my, my take from someone who walks the lake every morning and I will tell you that people do not move over. And, um.
But there's no line there now, so.
It's not everyone, Jeff. It's not everyone. And maybe they didn't know who I am and that could be quite possible. But I will tell you that it is very difficult. Uh, there are, there are a lot of rules, total rule followers and that yellow line is meant to keep them on their side of the road. And, uh, it is difficult some mornings, especially walking my dog and trying to go out there and, and, and.
Are you proposing that you want a line or don't want a line? I'm just trying to follow your.
I would not do a line.
You don't want a line?
I don't want a line, no.
Okay.
And I realize and I, I, I have talked to, you know, other residents in the lake area that want a line because we don't have very good lighting around the lake and I do understand that. And that is the one thing that I will sit there and say that is quite true. But, you know, you, you, you have to take good with the bad, so you gotta make a decision, which is the worst way.
We just, we don't have a lot, there's not a lot of good curve markers down there. There's just, you know, and I've run onto it. I've got a full-size truck. And when you're sometimes on some of these roads and there's oncoming traffic, that yellow line is your only gauge to, to, to discern where the center of the road is, where there's oncoming traffic, so.
You're saying your carbon burner is too big for the lake? Maybe that's the issue.
I'm just saying some of these roads are very narrow. Even Long Hill's narrow in parts.
Well, Lake Road, Lake Road is even narrower now with the buildup of the leaves on the side of the road. So, there are certain things that, that happen.
So, are we talking about putting lighting in down there now? Is that where this is going?
Yeah. Come on.
My question was like, what's, what's our policy going forward for?
I'm gonna sit there and ask this question because it's a financial issue and Eric, I would ask you this. Uh, previous boards of selectmen have been very anti-lighting because there's a certain charge on lights. And now with the, the, the efficiency of the lighting, I would like to know what the state, whatever source charges us for individual lights and if we could rethink putting lights in different areas again. Because on Lake Road, there's really one light.
Apparently you missed the Dark Sky Initiative that was passed by the.
Exactly.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
You must.
Yeah, I'm not sure the zoning commission let you.
What's that?
I said, I'm not sure the zoning commission let you. That's a special permit application.
Yep.
And Jeff, you want a light right outside your, uh, garage there or what?
No, but I don't, I don't know if everybody knows. I have one. I didn't put it there.
Did you get a permit for that?
No, it was, it was, you know, I, I'm a youngster in town, so I've only been here twenty years, I guess, or so, but it was here before I moved in.
You, you beat me by four.
So, just to, so, just to sum up, I would support, I would support.
Line, line striping, you know, it, it is something that there's good and there's bad with it and we should make a decision which way we'd like to go. And if the decision of the board is to have Eric stripe the line when he finishes the improvements up, uh, on Lake Road over this next spring, we can line stripe the road the next time we have.
Can I, Jay, it looks like Jay's still unmuted. Let me ask Jay real quick. Jay, does anywhere in the state of Connecticut that, that we're getting resources from and work, I mean, wherever we're grabbing from, whether it's, uh, uh, Wyndham or, or, or Jewett City or whatever to get material from, do any of them offer like the recycled glass option in the, in the pavement?
Ooh. Uh, I haven't heard of that. You're talking about trying to, uh, brighten up the pavement?
Yeah.
Uh, to be honest with you, I haven't heard about that in a long time. I know there was, uh, there was a test on that quite some time ago. And beyond that, to the best of my knowledge, it didn't go anywhere.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. I know Willie Waste was crushing glass for quite some time.
Yeah.
Uh, and that was quite a while ago.
Are there any other enhancements that we can do that would address some of these concerns that are being brought up by, you know, Mr. McQuire and Mr. Murray?
Uh,
I mean, we.
Nothing, nothing that I'm aware of at the moment, other than striping and doing some signage, uh, you know, to, something to, uh, there is, there is a current program out there that Eric and I are working on with the state. We are not sure where it's gonna go yet, but, uh, uh, to put some, uh, uh, signage in our, you know, areas of town where we got some bad curves. And that's through a state, state program, a grant. So, but that's, that's something that we're working on. We're not sure where that's gonna go yet.
We're gonna line them all up right in front of Diane Granier's house.
Really, um, for the record, it was Ms. King that wanted this issue on the agenda.
Uh, that's, no, that's okay. All, all, all the thoughts that I had have been already brought up. You all.
Well, apparently Ms. Mrs. King is letting Mr. Murray car, carry her well water today.
Well, just, I mean, just as a cyclist, I don't really have an issue with most of the cars on the road. Most of them give me the room. Um, maybe as a pedestrian, Jeff, you get a blinky light, a flashing light because.
No, it's that jacket that says number one selectmen on it.
This is being, being visible is number one. People can see you, they get out of the way.
I, I walk around with a hood on.
Yeah.
Do you wear your deputy badge?
So, Ms. King, why did you want this on the, on the agenda?
We, Paul and I had talked about it, yeah.
I, I asked Paula a question. I'd like Paula to answer. Why did you want it on the agenda?
Well, cause I've, I've driven around the lake. When it's foggy, I don't live on the lake, as you know, Mr. Manneville. And I'm, you know, I do the speed limit. And sometimes, you know, around the sharp corners around there, it's, it's a concern because I know that there's people walking at night or, you know, all hours of the day. So, I'm, I'm thinking it's a, I agree with Jeff Murray. It's, it's a concern. Especially, uh, especially if you have residents that live on the lake and they know the roads and they're speeding. And then you have people that don't live around the lake that don't know the road as well. So, I think that, that kind of overpowers the, the thought process of don't putting the line, don't put the line there because you're gonna, you're, you're giving the cyclists, you know, their, their room. Um, so I, I agree with Jeff Murray. I think it's.
So, are you saying you have a hard time following the road or are you saying that, uh, like Jeff was saying, or do, like, in other words, would, with the curvature, with the curvature signage that Jay has possibly mentioned, do you think that's enough? Cause Jeff actually said something about it's actually hard to just follow the road.
I think, I think that would be enough for me, but you get somebody who is not paying attention to the sign and maybe they're looking, I don't know, I.
So, Jeff not paying attention to the sign is the issue?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying somebody who's, who's driving, you, you can't get into somebody's mind and say, hey, they're gonna look at the line over the, the sign or the sign over the line. I don't know, Adrian.
I'll, I'll, I'll back Paul up. Driving that road from Route Six up to my house on a bad night, I'm in the middle of the road.
All right, so let's just.
The problem that you face without having a line is not that you can't still follow the road. It's when another car is coming down at you and how close to the edge of the road you need to get. I will tell you, and Eric, I don't, any accidents in the lake area, Eric, over the last six months?
Uh, I don't have current crash data. There were a couple crashes on the historic crash data. There were a couple crashes.
So, we'll get that for our next, our next meeting. And I will tell you, the lines cannot be dealt with now.
Why not?
There's your crash data.
Cause.
Now, that's the kind of flurry.
I understand, if I understand the paving review and the future plans for Lake, Lake Road, Eric, you're planning on, on, uh, chip sealing? We're doing some sealing as you did the lakeside?
Correct. And Jay can review the, the upcoming plans a lot better than I can, which is, might be still on the.
Not like we're gonna go out and get the lines striped today.
No, but if we're talking about doing it, then it probably needs to be put in the schedule for the ones that we can do.
And my con, my concern about this was, you know, Long Hill's on the, on the, on the, uh, you know, the list for next year. And I didn't want to have the road get paved and not have a center line put in back in. So, going forward, I want to make sure we do that.
Jeff, remember, there's, there's really only, so there, there's two areas that we've elected not to put a center line in the past. The first are cul-de-sacs, short road sections that are fairly narrow. Um, we haven't bothered line striping. If you want to line stripe every road in town, you can line stripe every road in town, other than the dirt one. That would be kind of pointless. And the area directly around the lake. Remember, we put line striping on the approach up the hill for Route Six, all the way to the top, which, cause that was the concern that was brought to me, was a visibility concern coming up the hill in foggy conditions. And since that's not the area that's commonly walked, we striped that. We only really did not, chose not to stripe, you know, about a mile and a half in that loop around the lake. Um, if the board feels that we should stripe it, the next time up, we'll stripe it. And then.
It's like, is every other, like you said, every other, any other through, any through road should probably be line striped. Any through road.
And I'm also in favor.
Through a road that's not line striped. Do you know of any?
Lake Road.
So then he just told you the areas that were not line striped.
He said, I wouldn't have a, uh, issue with cul-de-sacs. I mean, my road's not striped, but, um.
Well, why not?
Because the traffic is, the traffic is so low, the traffic is so low on that road.
It's also a lot wider, ain't it?
Yeah, it's a lot wider.
Sure.
And it's in Jeff's backyard, so.
Okay, so, so the plan going forward is the Board of Selectmen, generally speaking, wants to stripe the Lake District.
I'm in favor of it also.
One stripe or two. And do you want epoxy paint or regular paint? And do you want retro reflective paint or not? What do you want?
What's the price difference?
Hmm, epoxy paint's two and a half times the cost, but it lasts a lot longer. Uh, usually the reflective stuff is, is in it if you go with epoxy paint.
But are we talking ten, ten grand, twenty grand difference?
For the town?
No, for that area.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna just do epoxy for one little area, so what you decide to do, you do for the town. Um, so I think the town spent about nine thousand last year on striping and painting. So, if we went with epoxy, you can probably double that ballpark.
I'd be in favor of that.
I'd be in favor of taking that nine thousand dollars and putting it in the Veterans Monument Park.
I was just gonna say that.
I knew that was coming.
Ah, there you go.
I was just gonna say that. Maybe if we needed stripes at the monument park.
Just, just.
We don't really care. We have, we have a line painting schedule, right? Let's just, let's just use what we're doing and just put Lake Road on this, the painting schedule.
And it, it's, it doesn't have.
Why don't we ask Jay to weigh in on that since he is public work.
I can probably, I can probably help you out a little bit on the striping part of things. So, Eric, Eric and I have discussed this quite a bit. And we both have our, uh, thoughts on that, but.
Are you saying, disagree with Eric?
What's that?
Do you disagree with Eric? You think it should be striped?
Uh, I understand his points and I unders, I also understand Jeff's points, uh, Murray's, um, regarding this, the center line striping. So, I have experienced this myself in my pre, uh, previous employee, employment. So, just to get back to the striping, if you go with the, the water-based paint, you're lucky, you're gonna get a year out of it. Year and a half, you're gonna end up striping again. With the epoxies, you can probably get, uh, three to four years out of it, uh, without a problem. Sometimes you get five, just depends on traffic and how well it wears on the center of the road.
Um, what have we been using up till now?
Water-based paint.
So, we've been using the cheap stuff?
Yes.
Yep.
And you also, uh, do a single line stripe, which is, uh, not recognized by MUTCD. Um, it's technically not enforceable. Uh, it's just basically a guideline down the center of your roads. Uh, double yellow lines recognized and it's also enforceable.
Jay, I want people to move over.
What's that?
I want people to move over.
I know. And, and.
I mean, the, the lake is just trying to get a guide down the center of the road. So, I'll be night, someone doesn't go off the edge.
So, Jay, you're saying.
But, but it's a, you know, it's a decision that the board has to decide. And if you just do a sing, a center line, which, you know, there's many towns that, that do that, still do it. Um, but if you go with the epoxy, you can put the glass bead in it and it's much more reflective at night. It's a lot easier to follow. And you don't lose that line so much in bad weather where a, uh, water-based paint, you tend to, you tend to lose that line a lot quicker. And, you know, it's, and it's sometimes difficult to see.
So, so a question for you is, how, how many, we, do we paint every year?
Uh, well, I don't believe that you have.
Pretty much every other year.
So, if we did the epoxy paint and got four years out of it, it'd be pretty much cost neutral?
Pretty much. So, you're saying there wouldn't be money left over for the park at that point?
Funny, funny, funny. Are we ready?
I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out.
No, I mean, Adrian, we use Town Aid Road, right? That's, that's what it's for.
Yeah, but it'll pay for its, it'll pay for itself.
It pays for itself. I mean, it's, it's, it's more reflective and it's, it's cost neutral, so why wouldn't we do it?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to me, the biggest reason you don't do it is if you look at areas that have been paved, the difference between the water-based paint is the water-based paint goes on very thin. It bonds to the surface, but it flexes with the surface and the epoxy paint is a much more rigid paint. So, if you go back and look at roadways that were painted years behind, like on the side of the road, the pavement underneath the paint is usually messed up four or five years later. So, it, it decreases the durability of the underlying pavement. That is the disadvantage of using the epoxy paint. Um, it has a lot of wonderful qualities. It's certainly a lot nicer. Um, you know, it looks like hell when it flakes, but usually it's okay. That's my take on it.
What does the state use?
Epoxy.
So, Route Six is epoxy?
Presumably, yeah. I think, are they using epoxy or are they using the thermo form paints? I thought the state was mostly using the thermo.
Well, it depends on where.
Um.
Plus now they're try, now they're trying to, you know, where they're, uh, milling out that sixteenth of an inch and then putting the paint in so it doesn't wear, it doesn't wear. So, that's a little different, too.
Wendy, when do you guys, uh, have on the schedule to paint lines next fall? When?
Yes, aft, well, it would be, it would be early fall.
Early fall.
Once the roadwork is done.
So, you have time to come back and report to us which paint type you'd like to use? Because it appears that this board will vote to sit there and stripe the roads. Well, let's say, stripe Lake Road.
Right.
So, can you come back to us at a future meeting and tell us which type of paint you want to use?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Preferably the epoxy one.
Does anybody else have any questions related to this? No, okay.
Thank you.
Um, is there anything else you want to talk about D, D double I, the, the paving review and future plans? Is there anything specific that you can address Mrs. King's court request?
There's more.
There's more, Adrian. Sit tight. Um, so Eric put some pictures of Chester Brook Lane. Um, I had, I had some concerns about there and Eric and I have kind of talked about this a little bit, but I wanted to have a little discussion with the board.
Lay it on us.
Some of the, some of the projects that we've done last year and, um, as far, especially the cul-de-sacs. Um, just concerned about that because on Chester Brook Lane, from what I heard from a resident and, um, Eric, you can jump in whenever. It wasn't sealed correctly, so when plowing was happening this season, a lot of the, a lot of the road material was getting pushed up onto lawns and, and, you know, I feel like we're paying all this money and, and I, I hope that we, whoever we contracted to, to do this, they did the best job they could, but I'm, I'm not really convinced that they did a great job. And even with our road, our cul-de-sac where I live, was not a big fan of, of the work that they did on my cul-de-sac, so. Was not a big fan of, of the work that they did on my cul-de-sac, so. I know that we might not be able to go back and fix these issues, but I guess my question is. Moving forward with, you know, the work that's coming up, um, are we, number one, are we using the same contractor? And then number two, how do we? How do we learn from this and, and fix it in the next coming projects if we do use them?
So I would say their first question is, is Chesterbrook and Old Farms or Oak Farms?
Yep, oak like the tree.
Oak Farms were two different contractors. One was a chip seal surface that was not fog sealed afterward. Um, and the other was a, uh, what's called the cape seal, which is chip seal and micro over it. Um, so if we start with chip sealing, it, I took the pic, I put the pictures in. The problem with Chesterbrook is just the very turnaround in the cul-de-sac did not get fog sealed. The contractor, and I argued over that a little bit, but his point is that. You know, if you're trying to do tight radiuses, you can never get the material overlapped properly, and it pools and it looks like crap. And so they typically don't ever do just the turnarounds with the final fog seal over. So yes, that very end of the cul-de-sac did have higher chip loss. Than other spots, but if you look at the close-up picture. I picked, and I took a half dozen of different spots in that cul-de-sac. You can see that. You, you know, you've got like ninety-five percent chip retention there. So that represents actually a pretty good chip seal job, which has suffered very little stone loss. Where the one person has a problem is because of where the driveways are. All the snow in that cul-de-sac gets pushed into one little corner. And so it looks like there's a lot of stone. But if you look at the snow all the side, the rest of the cul-de-sac, you don't see any black into it. And that's because the material isn't plowed up there. So you're always going to get some stone loss with chip seal. You know, that is inevitable. You know, that's, that's why chip seal is a low-cost technique. Um. You know, it, there are some downsides to it. But I think overall, the chip seal job from my perspective was pretty good. There's very little stone loss. Um, you know, the cul-de-sac represents the worst out of any town road. But even that, there's not really, if you look at that pile while it looks ugly, it's because the snow's melting. You know, and you have a dark material on the outside. So as far as I'm concerned, that cul-de-sac came out fine. Um, you have one customer that's unhappy, but you know, that, that's, I hate to say it, but that's kind of life. That's chip seal. Um, and remember too, up until we started going to all salt this year. Last year, we would have put fifteen hundred tons of sand on town roads. And probably over half of that would have ended up on the sides of the road and on people's lawns. And we're not doing that anymore. So we're putting, you know, one one-hundredth of the amount of junk on people's lawns that we used to. It's just more noticeable because it's, you know, it's black stone as opposed to sand. So. I personally don't see the problem. I've looked at that cul-de-sac. You know, a half dozen times since they've done it. Um, maybe Jay can weigh in, you know, yeah, there's been some stone loss, but. You know.
Well, I mean, to be clear, Eric, it's not that you don't see that there's a problem there, it's that we acknowledge that the problem is part of the. It comes with the material that we've decided to go with.
Well, I mean, I don't see that as a problem. That's just stone loss.
Hey, Eric, Eric, the alternatives are to do what?
Uh, if you don't like that, probably to pave it.
So, so in reality, we're talking about a low-cost alternative to pave a lightly-traveled road. Or to, to, to care for a lightly-traveled road, where the alternative is to spend additional money. To do it in a different manner.
Correct. Correct.
So it's not ideal, but we're saying we think it's acceptable, given the, the limitations of, of what we're working with. Paula, does that? Help your concerns?
So I, I'm, uh, getting back to my other question, when, when we have our next set of projects coming up, are we? Number one, are, we're not using that contractor? Because you said that there was an, um, it was a different contractor that did oak farms, correct?
Well, because there were two different surfaces.
Because it was two different.
Did oak farms originally and chip seal, that a different contractor came back and microed over it.
Okay.
We're not likely to do any micro because frankly, we can't afford that. What we did on your road was way too expensive for what the town can afford to pay for. So we can't afford to put that good quality surface on your road.
But, but Paula appreciates the job you did, Paula, don't you? The question is, what was wrong with the job, Paula? Because I heard about Chesterbrook, I haven't heard about Oak Farms, what's wrong with it?
Listen, it's. Before, before it was redone, it looked better, so. Just the cul-de-sac, the, first of all, when you come down the road, there's a big seam in the road, so. Before you get to the cul-de-sac, it looks like two little, two pieces of the road. And then when you get to the cul-de-sac, there's divots in the cul-de-sac, so it's not. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm not a paver, I.
Are, are the divots where the drainage basins were? Because there's several basins in that cul-de-sac, if I remember correctly.
No, it's when they kind of curve around where the mailboxes are, so before, before the drains, there's a bunch of, um. Yeah, I, it's hard to explain, I guess, um, it looks like a tire mark or something, so.
But, but it's not functionally harming the road, it's just a looks issue?
Yeah, I mean, I, my concern tonight was. Are, if we're spending, we're spending money on this, right? We're spending town money. And are we, are we getting, are we getting the service that we're spending our money on? So.
So you were asking if it was done correctly, you're not assuming that it's done correctly?
Correct.
Eric, did we have any issues with the oak farms contractor? Are we okay with what was done there? I know that actually preceded you, so.
No, I was, I was there when they did that.
When you did the micro or when we did the?
Yeah, when we did the, we microed it this year.
Yeah, but it was tip sealed prior.
Yeah, but just shortly prior.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was done pretty close, close together.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I thought both the chip seal and the cape seal came out fine, I mean. None of these techniques give you beautiful, smooth pavement that you would like. Um, and if we could afford it, I would never chip seal a road. I mean, I'm a cyclist. Uh, personally, I hate chip seal. The last thing I want to do is have to chip seal roads. But. You know, given what we have to spend and how much stuff we have to accomplish, our only practical alternative is chip seal. Um, we cannot afford to pave. You know, what? You know, we can't afford to pave our way out of our problems. We just don't have that kind of, we, we're, we don't have the kind of money to do that.
But, but Paula, it's actually a great point that you're bringing these two up, because this goes back to the fact that. Even though we are asking for an increase this year. We're actually asking for an increase. And, and trying to be very frugal about how we're spending that money, you know? So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would love to, I like the surface, the micro surface much better as a cyclist. Than driving down, riding down a chip sealed road. In. Chip seal kind of sucks. But it's affordable and it's a great preservation technique. In other words, for very small dollars. You can prevent a road from getting worse. And that's, that's basically what we're doing, trying to restore a surface. To make all of our roads drivable again, because we've got some that are, you know, are, are pretty bad. Um. You know, without being able to afford going through and systematically repaving. I mean, if you look at it right now, about forty, around forty percent of our roads are, you know, poor. Um. You know, or failing, and, and we really got to correct that. And I think Jay has come up with a reasonable plan for doing that. But doing that relying on shimming and then chip seal. And we're, we're kind of accepting that we're not going to have great roads. But to get all our roads to the point where they're drivable. Um, you know, and as far as future plans, Jay's probably a much better guy to explain that than me, because, you know, he's the foreman.
Is that my cue?
Absolutely.
Okay, so listening to every, everyone's, uh, views on this, so. Basically, again, Eric and I have been tossing this around and. For. For about forty thousand dollars per mile versus you're in the neighborhood of, uh. Oh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand per mile. So, um. You know, and reclaim and pave. Now, is there techniques in between each of those? Yeah, there's different things, so. It's a, it's a wide range of cost to improve your roads. So what we've been talking about is basically some preservation. How long would it take us? Because there's, as he, as Eric mentioned, there's about forty percent of the roads that are in poor condition, and then it goes up. Uh. Uh, from there, but that being said. If we can go through the roads. Go through the roads in three, four years. Um, and preserve them, do a shim and chip process. Which I did in my previous employer's, uh, employment, um. We can put some shape back in the road. We get the water running off the road. Getting back to, uh, um. You know, cleaning up our road edges, making sure the water that's on the road gets off the road, because that's, that's important. A lot of the problems is you're having water staying in your road in those wheel ruts. And it's penetrating below the, uh, road surface, getting into your roadbed. And you're constantly gonna have those failures, the potholes, looking, so. Again, if we get some shim and done, we chip seal. Seal it off. And, and we move on. Um. I propose this year approximately nine miles of roads. With about four, roughly four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, knowing that. We need a little bit of, uh, leeway that, you know, depending on those primary roads to get done. We would have, we might have to cut back a little bit on some of the roads that we want to get done that were. Uh. As part of next year's program. Um, if we can start into that, we're already ahead of the game. It just, a lot depends on how much we spend in shimming. Because shimming is where the, where we're going to add some pavement to those poor areas. And then we're going to, uh, chip seal over it. Um, because. Don't want to have to chip seal over a wheel, uh, wheel rut. Um. Leave it at that for now, if anybody's got any questions.
Paul. Paul, I think to answer one of your questions. Um. You know, we know we're not trying to approach this with kind of premier techniques. What we're trying to do is stretch techniques as far down the pavement. You know, schedule as we can. I mean, the, the ideal thing to do for a lot of our roads is basically to come in here with a giant machine, grind them up. Reestablish the base and start paving right from scratch. But that is horribly expensive. And we, you know, we could probably do a mile of that a year. And if you look at, if, if you've got thirty-four miles, that means we come back to your, your road in about thirty-four years. You know, which is about fifteen years after it's not drivable anymore. So the, the, the ultimate goal is to take some of the really high-traffic roads. You know, like Long Hill, for instance, and say, okay, there are some spots where we're gonna have to commit. To reclaiming the road and repaving. But in general, what we're trying to do is first get everything drivable, but with the chip seal surface on the top. Um, so it's, in, in, you know, one of the things we have to discuss is. There are people that are going to be unhappy with that. There were a number of people unhappy last year with the chip seal. Because, you know, it's not great surface for walking your dogs and, you know, kids have problems skateboarding on it for a year or two and. You know, it's not a great smooth surface. Um, but given what we have for resources, it seems like it's probably the, it's. The most cost-effective thing we can do to the roads.
Understood. Are you, are you happy, Eric and Jay, with, um. Whatever we did in this past year, are you happy with the way things went and, and the way it looked? Because my, you know, my expectation might be different than yours, because you understand the process better.
Well, I will tell you that what you see out there is a lot of, uh, people's concerns, you know, with the, the chip loss. And as Eric stated, that. That's a common thing. You're, you're always going to have that, especially the first year after it's been done. Um. And sometimes it's a little worse than others and, and sometimes not. In a cul-de-sac. Tends to be, always tends to be a problem area, because again, you're plowing, you plow the snow to a, a certain, uh. Spot, and that's where all the sediment ends up in that snow pile. So we have to go back in when the snow melts and we might have to sweep off the lawn a little bit. It'd be no different if it was, if we were putting sand in there. Um, but, uh, um, being able to go in and sweep. You know, after the fact, um. You know, the, the following year, and then anything that gets, uh, left in the cul-de-sac. When you go around, you pick up some more of that loose stone. It will get better over time. Is it necessarily a failure? I don't think so.
Okay.
Jay, are we going around, are we going around doing that? Because I know the state doesn't do it for me. They don't, they don't clean off where they leave stuff. Are we doing that as a town?
Well, I wouldn't say that we do it everywhere, but some, you know, when you get a pile of, uh.
If there's, if there's a heavy, a heavy concentration.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just like when you, you know, you plow up, uh, your, at your intersections and you, you know, you turf the edge a little bit. Well, you'd like to go back up and then clean some of that plow damage. Does it get down every year? Maybe not everywhere, but you try to pick out your bad ones.
Okay, cool.
Or mailboxes in case that might happen, never know.
Jeff, how's your mailbox intact this year?
It's not replaced yet.
Yes, Jay still has a job then.
So, so anyway, uh, I think Paula, the one thing from my end is I would love to sit there and have more money to do a lot of things. And I know we made choices to spend our money in different ways to try to. Extend what we could do, and it's not perfect, it'll never be perfect. Um. Unless we had an unlimited budget and we could pave every road and we can get it all done quickly.
I, I think Paul is being disingenuous. I've driven her driveway, so.
No, she's not. She is, she was, she is representing her, the residents that are, they're speaking to her, which is, that's what you're supposed to do. And, and Eric is, is.
They had chip seal and micro seal on that road, they have been taken care of.
Eric is representing the town by trying to, to, uh, frugally. Utilize resources and do the best possible job that they can.
We know it's not perfect, but it's what we can afford right now.
I would tell you, the one thing that I would ask you to do, Eric and Jay, is please post what you're expecting to do in the next six to twelve months on the website. So people can understand that their roads are on the list. I mean, I know we have a big project coming up for. Shoddy Mill and Long Hill, and I know you're, you're planning on doing some other things, uh, around the lake over where you did the. The shimmy project, so if you could just post that out there, Eric, that would be beneficial to everybody.
Yeah, we're pretty close to having, uh, essentially a three-year plan to present that kind of shows what we're doing over a period of time.
I, I think, I think we're, uh, maybe I'm, I'm misspeaking here, but I'm just speak for Jeff anyways. I think maybe what Jeff is pointing out is that. We're looking for, you know how you've been doing the announcements and stuff to, you know, say what roads are going to be worked on and stuff? Something along those lines, let's have a permanent location on. Either pop-up or something on the webpage when you hit it that says, by the way. This is what we're working on in the next thirty days, these roads are being addressed, whatever, whatever, and just keep rolling that, you know? Um. You've been pretty effective with that on the Facebook page. I think we just need to carry that to other places, you know, where people aren't doing social media. I know Jeff's not on social media really, so. Um, you know, he's not getting the message, so we need to find a venue that we can hit Mr. McGuire on.
Well, we, no, we do tend, we have been posting. No, we do tend, we have been posting on the River East. And, um, last year, depending on what we did, a lot of times we actually flyered all the mailboxes on a road prior to doing roadwork on it. Um, that met with kind of mixed results. Um, I got accused of stealing somebody's mail. That was kind of an unfortunate confrontation. Um, but, uh, you know, we're 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 working hard to keep people informed and we've put stuff in the River East. So we've done a pretty good job of notifying the public, you know, when we're gonna be affecting them.
And 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 as Amanda's pointing out, people can still sign up for those notices on the on the website, right?
Yes.
I mean, just just simply because it's the law, from a town budget perspective, it's the largest slice of what we spend our money on. You should put it up front and center on the website.
That wonder the new website that looks so much better. Let's utilize it.
I I I sit during the meetings and I scroll through to see where things are. It's a great job. Okay, so are we all set with roadwork, Paula?
Yes, this was a this was a good conversation to have. Thank you.
Hey, very welcome.
Every meeting.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep.
Thank you, Jay.
So we're gonna move on to nine E charter revision. Anybody have any issues related to this tonight? Okay, then we're gonna move on to nine F, the Ethics Commission. Does anyone have anything related to this tonight? Okay, we're gonna move on to nine G revisions to the personnel policy that Eric sent out to us. Does anyone have any issues related to that?
So do you? Do you want me to send that on to the attorney for review? Are you generally happy with that? Um, or how do you want to proceed? That was basically the 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 major thing in there was a change from twenty to twenty-six hours minimum to be eligible for health care and retirement benefits.
Um, does anyone need any additional time on that? No, do you want to send it? Do we want to send it on to the attorney? Okay, send it on to the attorney, Eric, and let's sit there and get feedback. So the next meeting, we can sit there and vote on it.
Okay.
Uh, nine H is the time clock policy.
Yep. So I said that to you also, the board had expressed to me that, uh, they were unhappy that we weren't fully implementing the time clock and the board wanted a method to make it clear to employees that we were, uh, serious about using the time clock and proposing a series of penalties. So that's what the the policy reflects what you asked me to bring you back at this meeting.
You you expressed that you had some concerns, having worked at some different places. That you didn't know maybe how enforceable or what have you those were. Can you elaborate on that?
So I I did two things from what you originally asked me to do. The first was I made it kind of too tiered. In that you give the employees the option essentially to review their own time card, realize it's incorrect and notify you well ahead of time that that's the case. In which case there wouldn't be any penalties. So that's an employee that looks at their own time clock at the end, their own uh, prime pay record at the end of the two-week period, realizes it's incorrect, notifies you ahead of time that it's incorrect, notifies your supervisor. The second is, you know, a, um, in in that's far more what I'm used to. Um, I can tell you as a Tesla employee, there wasn't, I don't think there was ever a pay period when at least one person that reported to me didn't screw up their time card. You know, they were required to notify me of that. Um, that that particular software allowed them to correct their own time card. But when it showed up on my show screen, it showed the revised as well as the original, and they had to put in an ex- explanation, and the onus was on them to correct and send it back to us. I don't think with prime pay, you know, without. I don't think we can turn that same permission on for all the employees. We've kind of looked at that. But I think we can put the onus on them to report back to us and say, hey, this is screwed up. Here's how it's screwed up. Um, here's what it should be. Um, and as long as they do that ahead of time, I don't have a real problem with that because, you know, punching in, punching out, you know, somebody's gonna forget sooner or later, and I don't want to get punitive any more often than we have to because I think that's a you know, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna affect a lot of employees.
My my personal take on this was not random punching issues. My personal take was chronic offenders, so. That that's that's me. I I just feel like we bought the time clocks. People need to use the time clocks. It's one thing if you miss a punch, you know, a couple punches a month even, right? But if we're talking once a week, twice a week, that that shouldn't be happening, really, so. Personal. You know? You come in the building, you walk by it, you know, whatever. So do you still have concerns with what you put together, or do you feel like what you put together is workable and? Or do you do you feel it needs to be modified to be fair?
Um, I I still think it goes too punitive, but that's just me. I I mean.
So how so how would you correct it? What would you do differently?
So. I mean, I don't think I would go past a written warning. Uh, I just don't see it being enough of an issue to justify, you know, taking, you know, sending an employee home for a day. Um, but that's just me.
What threshold would you put in there to send employee home for a day? Ten ten punches a quarter?
If you have a problem with ten punches a quarter. You know, that's that's one to two a week.
Right.
I mean, Eric. I'll I'll tell you what, before we put this into place, Eric, can you report back to us for the next meeting? How many punch problems you have?
Right. Let's do that.
Right? Just for the next month, thirty days. Tell us, tell us how big of an issue it is, and then you have to put something in place. I mean, listen, this is just a behavior correction. This is, this is changing someone's behavior that they've had over years, that they do these crappy pieces of paper and scratch out their number and put their number in and.
It it could be, though, that the people we currently have in place are much better than the people we have had in place in the last six months.
Correct, and and and. And and Adrian, you're a hundred percent correct that we bought a a punch system to use a punch system. So, but.
Yep.
And I don't have a problem with removing the sending someone home part. But it should be at the very least a written after a certain number, whatever that number is that we agree to.
Personally, I I I I have no problem with, you know, a delay on their paycheck. If they don't follow the rules, their paycheck gets delayed.
Yep.
I mean, to me, that is the penalty.
Right.
I mean. But believe me, people recognize when their paycheck is short. Um, but I would also say it would not surprise me if we get grieved over it. Now, I think we're gonna win if we get grieved, but I'm just saying, understand that we're gonna, we're gonna chew up some fees dealing with it.
Follow the rules.
So let's take so let's take out that part of the policy then.
No, let's let's do it this way, Adrian. Let's find out how big of a problem we are, and then Eric, change the program to the way that you think will work the best for your group of employees.
I'm fair with that.
Then let's get this approved next meeting.
Great. As long as there's some analogy for correction. I don't have an issue with it.
All right, so, uh, we have, uh, that was H. We have nine I, which was added, which is town budget meeting day.
Okay, so I've been going over this today with the town clerk and the town attorney. Um, Dennis, yeah, Dennis is still on. So so basically, we.
Yes, wake up.
Uh, he's awake.
Dennis has been up.
I'm enjoying this immensely. I always do.
It's his mustache that is sleeping.
This is entertainment for me.
So there there's two things that came up, which I think we need to be aware of. We were originally talking about holding an online budget meeting with a drive-by vote. The problem is the governor's executive order will have expired by that point, so that's gonna make that questionable uh, to do. So what I'm gonna suggest is that we go back to the old ways of doing it. And we do it, you know, we we basically use the gymnasium. We space everybody out six feet and we have a conventional budget meeting, um, with a vote. If that's okay with you.
Well, well, we could do a corral section and everybody with us with a COVID could all go to one side because.
Let's let Dennis find out if we can do a virtual meeting because the last meeting worked well and do it on.
We're allowed to have what at least fifty percent capacity now. Is that correct, Eric? On the gym?
Yeah, uh, the latest is fifty percent capacity with a maximum of a hundred.
Oh, it's max a hundred.
But you know, this is in the state of flux. Uh, I I wanted to talk to some folks I know in the governor's office to see if there's any any, you know, any likelihood of change, but my understanding is that most of the executive orders expire on April twenty, which is a couple of weeks before our our town meeting is due. And those executive orders are are what, you know, allow the virtual meeting. And, um.
If we're at our COVID number, we may not, we may not have to worry about it if if COVID stays where it is and.
Right, unless there's a blow up that's unexpected, and it could, there could be, you know, there are people burning masks in Idaho, you know, you don't know.
Yeah, but but.
The way things look now, you know, the executive orders will expire. My understanding is that Ned is not going to, uh, issue additional executive orders. Uh, that, uh, you know, he's been put under a lot of pressure to work with the legislature on these things and not do it by himself anymore because, you know, the situation has become ameliorated. And I believe that.
Dennis, so if 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 we just pick a date, hold the gym for that date, and if it has to, we switch it to online. Is that, is there any reason we can't do that?
There's no reason under your charter that you can't do that. It says present. Uh, they have to be, people have to be present. And I think being present online is okay, but Eric and I and Carol discussed it for a while today and and you know, even if we tried to do a virtual meeting from the gymnasium, we may not have the capacity to do that. I don't know. Because because I, you know, you know, you, one thing you have to have, you have to have twenty-five people present. This is, this is, uh, this is not the kind of town meeting you had back in January, where it doesn't matter how many people show up. This is, this requires twenty, at least twenty-five people to be present. Given the, you know, the increase in your budget, uh, Board of Ed's budget, you're likely to have a lot more than that. But, uh, you know, that's that's part of the problem. The other problem is is, uh, Jeff, is that uh, you can't really do it on a Saturday because your charter says it has to be done on a business day.
We operate the transfer station on Saturday.
You can do it at the transfer station.
We operate the transfer station on Saturday. It's a workday.
Um, okay, I I I'm actually, at Carol's request, I spent time, you know, since I'm not on the clock, I spent time and I was intrigued by the issue, researching the issue of what is a business day? And Saturday is not a business day in the US of A. Maybe in Europe, Jeff. It's not. Every every.
You know, well, it's it's.
You can do it, you know, you don't have to listen to me. I'm I'm just an advisor.
Dennis, this is a new administration. Everything's up for grabs here.
This this, you mean your administration?
No, the the we have a new, we have a new, there's a new sheriff in town. That president is gonna let, you know, there's some leeway here.
Biden, he has nothing to do with it. No.
So our last, our last, our last meeting that we did, a public meeting that went extremely well, that was on a Saturday.
Was done on a Saturday.
It was done on a Saturday. It worked rather well.
Yep. I know.
But he's saying the charter addresses that we can't do it on a Saturday.
Charter, the the.
Charter. The charter says a workday. I will question what a workday represents.
Business day.
I work seven days a week, but I get it that it's a Saturday.
Unfortunately, though, your 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 town attorney has given you an opinion, which now if you go against.
I'll have to write you an opinion.
I argue with my town attorney that Saturday is a workday.
You're ignoring the legal advice of the town attorney.
Supposing supposing the budget passes or fails. And it will still has to go to referendum.
I I don't.
Somebody files a lawsuit.
Monday, do it on a Monday night.
No, I love doing it on a Saturday. I just, I just want to know that we're all in agreement that we are going against the advice of the town attorney.
It should be virtual.
It it's almost certain that that business day does not include Saturday or Sunday.
But that's really only an issue if somebody complains.
Right, but if somebody doesn't, things don't come out the right way, you know, as an attorney, I have to advise you. I I, you know, if it goes s- somebody that that has a little money hires an attorney, sues you because you didn't hold it on the right day because they didn't like the outcome of the budget vote. Yeah, I agree with Dennis. We should do it per the charter, just to, just to cross our Ts and dot our Is. I, you know, that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to tell you, you know, what to do to protect yourself from liability.
I'm not going against Jeff Murray, so I I agree.
I'm not either. I I I know, I I. You guys are, you guys are right. McGuire is wrong.
Yep.
I wish it could be on a Saturday. In fact, if it were, Jeff, I would come.
So the suggestion is to hold it Thursday, May sixth, as the date for the budget meeting. And then if it does that, and if it passes, it goes to referendum on May eighteenth. If it doesn't pass on May sixteenth, there would be another budget meeting on May thirteenth. And then the referendum would be on May twenty-fifth. So that's where we're at if we do that, both those. Because what you want to do is you want to do it early enough that you can get at least one rejection and still get in on time to have a normal, uh, to get the tax bills out on time. So that's that's kind of the the best scenario we came up with.
Well, it's a tentative solution. I mean, you, when we talked today, you said you'd give me, you would have the, you would ask the board to decide finally, uh, two weeks from tonight at the next meeting. I wanted to talk to some Lamont people and see what, you know, what the real lowdown is on that. Because, uh, but my my, you know, my, right now, it looks as though those executive orders that enabled us to do a virtual meeting. And, you know, are all gonna go down, gonna go out on April twenty. Um, but we, I don't know that for sure. Um, but we have, you know, we have to plan. Uh, you have, you have to give notice.
One or the other, either either the executive orders are holding and we can't do it internally because of a COVID limit. So we'll have to be online. It's gonna be one or the other, so. And we could still pick the date, can't we?
You can speak, yeah, you could pick the date and.
Yeah, we'll figure out the logistics later.
The May sixth date that Carol, actually Carol, we picked that date, I think, with Eric.
Yep.
I hope it's not foggy because without the line painting and we have to drive late at night to the town hall offices, it could be so many dangerous.
Would you stop her in the scrooge?
Daylight saving time.
As well, I'm gonna bounce here right now to pick up Paula so that she gets there.
I think you should end it outside at the transfer.
Against all COVID restrictions.
You could start early. You could start at like six.
All right, let's set the date. Let's set the meeting date and we'll work out the logistics later.
I like that.
May sixth, seven o'clock. Can't have it any earlier.
Let's move ahead. Let's get it done. I'll pick you up at six forty-five.
Okay, are we gonna vote on that to give Eric the approval, or do we just say, Eric, that's the day?
Eric, that's fine.
It's for the charter. We're gonna have to sign off on it at some point to notice, but we'll, we'll save that for two weeks from tonight. Just in case I, you know, I, I'm gonna dig into it a little deeper.
Okay.
And, um, but I think the result's probably gonna be the same. You need a big venue. Um, you know, I just hate to see anybody turned away, that's why I would suggest doing a hybrid meeting with everybody who shows up and anybody who doesn't show up, or can't get in, can be on their phone or on their computer.
Have it in the parking lot.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on it.
Work it out. Yeah, that's something to be worked on.
Move on to item 10, approval of meeting minutes from Wednesday, February 10th, Tuesday, February 16th, and Tuesday, February 23rd. Someone wanna make a motion to approve those minute meetings?
So moved.
Meeting minutes.
So moved.
Seconded by Adrian, seconded, excellent.
I did.
All, all those in favor? I?
I.
All those opposed? Does anyone abstain? Adrian, no one-
Yay, he did it!
There you go. I follow instructions incredibly well. So I'm assuming Amanda that Adrian abstained, because he didn't say anything at any of those points. Uh, Finance Department report, revenue summary, town budget summary, town aid road, town cash report, and over expenditure report. Does anyone have any comments on the information provided in the package? Eric, do you have anything that you want to bring forward?
No, nothing at this point.
Any accounts that are in trouble of being over expended, or that we should look at?
Uh, nothing at this time, there, there are some that are over expended, but nothing really, you know, nothing really critical.
All right, I'm gonna ask, because I, I accused Dennis O'Brien of clicking his pen. Which one of you is clicking their pen?
I'm not.
Eric?
I don't even have a pen.
Eric, it's Eric's face.
Sorry.
See, I get-
I was clicking, is that the one?
That's me.
I was just writing my-
I just thought it was, well, town attorney having a little senior moment, but I apologize.
Wow.
Well, let's move on.
I would like an apology on behalf of the issue.
Apologizing, Dennis, I texted him to stop clicking his pen.
Can we get back on the agenda, please?
I thought you were, you weren't serious.
Oh, Jeff Murray, you've got to be kidding me. All right, uh, does anyone have any questions related to the Finance Department report?
Jeff, any questions?
No.
Jeff wants to get moving. The budget appropriation transfers and over expenditure requests, Eric, anything?
Uh, nothing this month.
Okay, the tax collectors' report. Any questions related to the tax collectors' report? We collected 1.7 million, 19,421 dollars and 65 cents last month. In January, actually, so what is this, this is March, so in January, that's what we collected. Okay, no one has any other questions related to that? Eric, any issues related to the revaluation services?
Uh, no, so the only thing I wanted to say is that it is spring and they haven't really changed the executive orders. So the next thing that's going to go out is we're gonna send out a letter to all the residents stating that they either have to decline an interior inspection due to COVID, which they can simply by calling the office and say, I don't want to do it, or they have to schedule with one of the people to come in and do the interior inspection. So we're anticipating putting that letter out in about a week to inform the public. Now, we're also anticipating that an awful lot of people are gonna say no, um, which is certainly their right.
Okay. Any questions for Eric related to the revaluation services?
And if you all want to see a copy of basically what we're proposing to send out for the letter, I can certainly send that off to the board. I just got that, a draft of it this afternoon.
Um, Eric, quick question, are we gonna take the opportunity, given the change in personnel for the Building Department, uh, to adjust those hours?
So if you would like to do that, I suggest we go into executive session and hash it out, um, if that's something you want to pursue.
Well, given our new employment policy as far as, um, uh, insurance, that may be a, a good thing to look at, because that was something that, you know, we wanted to address at some point previously, and just didn't have a chance to, to do, so.
Okay, so do you want to go into executive session, Adrian, to address that today?
Uh, well, if we're gonna advertise for that position shortly, which I would think we are, we probably need to have that discussion.
Dennis, can we go on executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss that?
Guess what? Hiring somebody in the future?
So the, the reason why is, is it would require a union negotiation, because it's a union position.
There you go, yes. If it, if it's a union negotiation item, yes, you, you can, in fact, you could even discuss it, you know, elsewhere. It's not a meeting. But you can go into executive session and you, you need to, you need to do it outside of the public view.
Okay. Um, can we add that, Dennis, after public speech, is public speak and before adjournment?
Yeah, you can add it, you can add a, as long as it's, is it on the agenda at all?
No, yeah.
No.
No.
Notification just happened.
We added, we added the resignation of Susan to six feet.
This is a regular meeting, so you can add to the agenda, and you don't have to have executive session identified on the agenda. You, you just have to move, add it to the agenda, then move to go into executive session, and you need a two-thirds vote to do that.
We're gonna-
The other is, because it's a union negotiation, and that is something that actually falls outside of the FOIA statutes.
You're right.
We could pick a date and discuss this without it being a public meeting. So the reason why I didn't originally tell you to put it on executive session is because we just got it this afternoon, and I thought I would at least speak to Mr. McGuire first, and then see whether we wanted to have a discussion with the Board of Selectmen at some point. Um, but we can certainly do it tonight, I, I'm not opposed to that, if that's what you want to do.
You could actually do it tonight and not even do it to executive session, but just-
Okay, let's, let's sit there and see if we have enough votes for it after public speak and- Uh, the departmental reports 15. Anybody have any issues with any of the information provided us, which there really wasn't a lot? So, we got Building Department information, we got a little bit of information from the State Trooper, I don't really remember seeing very much else. Any other questions? Okay. Eric, is there any correspondence that we need to review?
Uh, no, nothing that's of any real importance.
Um, were there any, uh, tax waivers that we have to vote on this, this meeting?
There are no tax waivers in this go around.
That's a good, that's a good month, there we go. All right, um, the last one is, uh, public speak, so we're gonna sit there and go around our, our list of residents and sit there and see who wants to participate. Kathy Palazzi, you are first on my screen.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I misheard you. Um, I believe you've just reported on the department reports that you had not received any, quite a few of the reports, and I know that for a fact I sent mine in.
Yes, you did.
Yes, your, your report for the senior transportation has been provided to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
And if you would like to go over it, we certainly can.
No, I don't want that, I just want to make sure you have it, thank you.
Yep, we absolutely-
41 total passengers, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
Diane Grunion?
Oh, yeah, I have a, a couple of things. Um, one, you talked about the, uh, bridge not being maintained since its inception. I just want to let, let you know that next year, 2022, the bridge will be 10 years old. It is our 10-year anniversary of the, the new bridge, the covered bridge. So, um, 10 years, nothing has been done, so, just a piece of info for you. Um, also delighted with the new sign at the dump, um, the dump in general is looking-
Transfer station, transfer station.
Oh, transfer station, you know? Slash dump, um, transfer station is looking good, uh, um, I like the sign, I like the, um, uh, the, the lot, lines on the road. The litter is all picked up, I find that staff is very friendly and helpful every time I go there, and, um, it's, it's looking good. Thank you, guys. Um, and the third one, I just wanted to chime in about the stripes on the road around Andover Lake. Yeah, I, I'm for it, um, it, it's hard, those rainy, foggy nights to, um, make sure I stay on the road when I'm drunk, so, um, if we could have that, that stripe there, it would be wonderful, so, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Joan Form. Okay. Joan's out, Shannon Loudon.
Good evening, thank you. My apologies for my delay in joining this meeting late, um, I was on the Ram Board of Education Budget Workshop about their use of their $754,000 audited surplus. And just an FYI, um, it sounds as though Andover will be receiving some $94,000 from Ram. They have the 754,000 audited surplus. It sounds like instead of putting 300,000 into their 1% on non-lapsing account, they're gonna reserve 210,000 of that for air conditioning for Ram. And, uh, so there'll be another 94,000 added into the already 449,000. So we get 17.34% of that, that'll be great for Andover, and I ask that money, more money be returned to Andover instead of being put into the non-lapsing account. Second, thank you very much for agreeing to the cooperative agreement tonight. For the record, I just want to note the following, because I think there's been a lot of back and forth and misunderstandings, and so I want to clear up anything. First of all, the town was very well represented on the search committee for the finance director by Eric Anderson, Jeff McGuire, and Mark Brinker. Eric then represented the town, and Valerie Bruno represented the Board of Ed in negotiating the contract with the finance director. We then learned that a cooperative agreement was required by statute for such a combined position. On January 11th, I forwarded to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education and the Town Administrator a draft of the cooperative agreement and the contract for the finance director that had been negotiated with the finance director at that time by Eric and Valerie. On January 13th, I then forwarded to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator the final cooperative agreement to which the Board of Education subsequently agreed, and I think you have agreed this evening. I don't believe that I, oh, and on February 11th, every member of the search committee, um, the three representing the town and the three representing the Board of Ed were forwarded a copy of the contract with the finance director who has now been hired, um, and I signed her contract about two weeks ago. So I don't believe that I ever heard back from the Town Administrator or the Town Attorney or any selectman with regard to either the cooperative agreement or the contracts with the finance director, and my apologies if I'm wrong in this regard. But the Board of Selectmen had copies of the cooperative agreement and copies of the contract, and I, I believe it was stated at some point that you did not, and you have. You also, through your representatives on the search committee, were presided with, provided with a copy of the contract that our finance director has now signed. We hired a wonderful new finance director, who I believe will be in attendance via Zoom at the Board of Education meeting on Wednesday evening. I learned during this meeting, because I peeled off a little bit when you were talking about chip ceiling and spoke with our superintendent. And although, uh, Sherry does not officially start in person until next Monday, she will be doing remote Edmonds webinars this Thursday and Friday to, before she even officially starts, get up to snuff on Edmonds. So, um, finally, neither the superintendent nor the Board of Education had any input whatsoever into the contract for the Assistant Finance Director position, nor do we have a copy of the current contract with her. We don't know if the superintendent has any supervisory authority over the Assistant Finance Director, which is a courtesy that we showed to the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen um, in the Finance Director Cooperative Agreement that we entered into and you affirmed tonight. So please forward us a copy of the contract with the Assistant Finance Director.
There isn't a contract that she's union.
Pardon?
There's, there's, the, there's, there's the union agreement, but there's no contract, because she's an employee.
As was requested of the Board of Education by the Board of Finance, I would like the town to provide to the Board of Finance the following specific information for our budget considerations, and our, by that I mean the town. How much savings did the town accrue in last year's budget because of closing due to the pandemic? And how much has the town received in SRR1 and SRR2 and coronavirus relief and America Relief Funds? Uh, all of that information has been provided to the Board of Finance by the Andover Board of Education. I asked for that information from the Ram Board of Education this evening, and I believe it's incumbent upon the town to provide the same information for the Board of Finance's consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Dian Cho Kett.
I am all set, thank you.
All right, Joanne Ebert. Okay, Brian Briggs.
Jeff, just one, one question, I mean, one, one comment after Shannon just spoke. Dennis would like to see both sides work together, it's one town, we're all together, like you addressed earlier. And I know she pointed out a lot of things, um, said something earlier, but, um, yeah, it's one town, one fund. Everybody wants good for the town, and it's, it's a good thing, let's hope this is a great employee. No, 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 we had them off. Into just hearing that, you know?
All right, Brian Briggs.
Um, yeah, I would have, just had a question about the nine, what is it, nine new business discuss and act upon the following in regards to the Ethics Commission and the Charter Revision Committee? There was really no discussion and no act upon following, so I'm wondering, are you guys gonna discuss that later and decide? Or is it just gonna go away and no one's gonna act on it, because nothing really happened, so I'm kind of confused.
Okay. All right, I would imagine-
I also, I know, I emailed Eric, and he never emailed me back about-
Brian, at some point in time, we will do a charter revision, it's just not right at this point in time. We're in the middle of trying to deal with our budget, so it's not something that this board, I wouldn't have put it on the agenda, to be really honest.
What about the Ethics Commission, it's been on, it was a law that's back, I don't know if the attorney's still on there, that was a law that was back in 2006. So I think that's like kind of pertinent, especially after the lawsuit that was brought upon the town. So I, I don't know, I just, I know you guys are busy, but like, it's been a long time, and I brought that up like a month ago, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your, uh, your involvement, and we will sit there and sit there and take all that into consideration.
Okay.
All right. Um, that is it, as far as people on my list, I don't see anyone else, if I missed anyone, I apologize. All right. Does, uh, by a show of hands, and I can't see Adrian, and I really don't know if we'd rather do this outside of this meeting than not go into executive session and just have conversations amongst ourselves. Eric, just from a timing standpoint, when are you anticipating posting this job?
You're muted, Eric. Eric, you're muted.
I got the resignation at 6:00 this evening, so I, I will be honest, I haven't put a great deal of thought into this.
I would rather, I would rather table this until another day, and we can all get on. Get, uh, Dennis, if I understand this correctly, because of this issue, we could have a meeting, um, uh, by telephone or by Zoom at some other point in time?
If it involves, uh, potential negotiations with a labor union, it doesn't even count as a meeting, so you can do it pretty much any way you want to do it, I mean, you know- pretty much any way you want to do it. I mean, you know, you could, I think you've done it before by going into executive session. That's okay too. But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's something that would can be done privately among the selectmen.
How long is it gonna take? How long is this gonna take?
I don't think it takes more than five or 10 minutes.
Let's just do it. We're all here.
All right.
Get it off our plate.
We can do that.
We have another meeting. It just, we're here. Let's just get it done.
All right, uh, before, before we do leave, um, um, uh, we have to sing to Scott Persone.
Oh, cut it out.
His birthday just passed. It, it just happened a few days ago. So everybody, if you wouldn't mind, I, I'm, I'm sad Shannon left us cause I know how good of a voice she has and she would have. Happy birthday.
To you.
Happy birthday to you. Dear Scott Person.
Happy birthday.
Birthday to you.
There you go.
Thank you.
So who's making a motion to go into executive session? I will.
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to.
You want me there?
Yes.
And invite me.
I may as well invite me too, unless you don't want me there.
Oh, yeah, but you should, definitely should invite Eric. He's the.
Invite Eric.
I, all right, motion that we go into executive session, including the Town Attorney and Town Administrator regarding possible union negotiations for the resign, resigned position in the Building Department today.
All right, we have, uh, Amanda, we have five minutes. Right? Uh, we're gonna stop recording.
Did someone second that?
I did, Scott.
Thank you.
You wrote on it? Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, do we have any abstentions? No, okay, good. All four, all five in favor. All right, are we gonna go to another meeting or we're gonna stay? Let's stay in this one.
This one, we gotta, um.
We gotta get, gotta get. Okay, so we're coming out of executive session at, uh, 10:28 and, um, the only thing left in our, uh, meeting for today, March 8th, is adjournment. Someone wanna make motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed? All those that abstain? Oh, good. So we're all good. Everybody have a good night. Thank you. Eric, thank you very much for everything you do. We appreciate you.
Yep, thank you, Eric.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Cheers.
Bye.